Senior at Harbor High School. She's been playing guitar for nine years and performing around the South for the past four years. She is also a three-year member of the Harbor-Varsity Tennis Team, four-year letterman on the Varsity Soccer Team. She's a member of the National Honor Society. She's a Senior Counsel Member, Harbor Television Production Programs Member, where she was just honored with the Student Pillar of Excellence from the Mid-American Chapter of the Emmys for craft and editing. And along with all of this, she carries a 3.9 GPA. Her music is her passion. She writes her own music and is enrolled at Middle Tennessee State University this fall and is going to major in music business. Please welcome Lindsey Will.
Thank you. (Singing) That first called September night, you were the blanket holding me tight. You were kissing me and the air stood still. You said goodbye after I said I will, yeah, yeah. We ran in when the thunder came. You told me sugar melts in the rain. Don't wanna watch a love go to waste, so we went inside, but it was too late. Oh, I, oh, I, I'm not even trying. Oh, I, oh, I, but I can't stop smiling, yeah, yeah. Do you think about me like I think about you? Do you think about me like I think about you? I moved down to your bed, saying, wrote you letters to the ink without. When the clouds rolled in, I grabbed the keys and played that song that we used to sing. I made a boy like you. It's funny how we used to sing it too, but he was always just a little out of key. So much different than you and me. Oh, I, oh, I, I'm not even trying. Oh, I, oh, I, but I can't stop smiling, yeah, yeah. Do you think about me like I think about you? Do you think about me like I think about you? Yeah. Sometimes I wonder if you wonder what it could have been like when you're sitting there drinking coffee, are you thinking of me? When it's thundering and raining outside. Oh, I, oh, I, I'm not even trying. Oh, I, oh, I, but I can't stop smiling. Oh, I, oh, I, it's sending me flying. Oh, I, oh, I, but I can't stop smiling, yeah, yeah. Do you think about me like I think about you? Do you think about me like I think about you? Yeah. Do you think about me? Do you think about me? Thank you all so much. I'm so excited to be here. It's such an honor to be playing for all of you. So I wrote this next song about a couple of months ago, and I like to write about a lot of experiences that go on in my life. And so I started dating a guy and wrote a song about it. And I recorded a music video for it in TV Productions class about a week ago. This is the second one that I've done with the Harbor Television Productions Program. And so they are super awesome. And we just finished it up today, actually, and so I'll be releasing it this week. And so this song is called "Boy in a Truck." (Singing) It's a smell kind of sitting in when I get pretty far, boy in a cowboy hat. Steer to the right of every guy and setting when I do that dance. Then you pulled up in that big M truck, my blue eyes were set on you. Make me a country girl too. We drove all night, his hand in mine, leaving dust in the southern air. He drives a little too fast, turns a little too hard, but my heart don't give a care. Put it in park while we're kissing in the dark, ooh, he's trying his luck. I love my boy in a truck. Then November night, when you got knocked out east over your way. Didn't say too much, but I'll tell you what, I smell of your country charm any day. Can't steer from the truth. Now I'm a country girl too. We drove all night, his hand in mine, leaving dust in the southern air. He drives a little too fast, turns a little too hard, but my heart don't give a care. Put it in park while we're kissing in the dark, ooh, he's trying his luck. I love my boy in a truck. Questioning this new part of me, I'm holding back, but feel so free, falling effortlessly. When we drove all night, his hand in mine, leaving dust in the southern air. He drives a little too fast, turns a little too hard, but my heart don't give a care. Put it in park while we're kissing in the dark, ooh, he's trying his luck. I love my boy in a truck. My boy in a truck. My boy in a truck. Thank you. This will be my last song for tonight. Thank you again for having me out here. It's been such an honor. I wrote this song about two years ago when I was in Nashville with two other writers there. And right when we knew it, we knew that it was something special. And so I put it on my album that I released this year. And a week before I released that album, I released my first music video that I made in Harbor TV Productions, which was super awesome. And it was a big deal. We went out for about maybe eight hours to a farm one day and just shot the video all in one day with a bunch of my friends and got it done, and it turned out great. And so this song is called "With My Eyes Closed." (Singing) And it's been just three weeks, but when your name and knees get weak and I can barely breathe. Little goosebumps cover me, ain't nothing I can do when you're whispering so sweetly. With my eyes closed, I can see I'm falling for you. So nice and slow, why don't you let me explore those lips? Just like this, with a kiss, with my eyes closed. I always thought that you were cool, it's not like me to break the rules. But I just had to. I had to get your number, get your name, and now I'm standing next to you, out here in the rain. With my eyes closed, I can see I'm falling for you. So nice and slow, why don't you let me explore those lips? Just like this, with a kiss, with my eyes closed. I'm lost in you and I don't care, yeah, no other boy can take me there. With my eyes closed, I can see I'm falling for you. So nice and slow, why don't you let me explore those lips? Just like this, with a kiss, with my eyes closed. With my eyes closed. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Lindsey. That is great. Great way to start. You never know what'll happen. My wife sang a song about loving a boy in a Honda Accord, but anyway, it didn't sound quite as good, but that was great. Good start, so. All right, well, before we get our meeting started this evening, Dr. Rollins, if you'd like to lead us in an invocation, then followed by the pledge before we call our meeting to order.
Well, welcome. We're glad to have each of you this evening. We celebrate our youth in every imaginable way, and your being here is a great way to be a part of all that. So let's pray together for just a moment. Dear God, we thank you for our students, for their great potential and promise. We thank you for the privilege that you've given so many of us to be their teachers and their principals, their superintendent, and to be their school board members. Dear God, we thank you for our parents and for their being partners with us, united in our combined efforts to teach each of them. And dear God, we thank you for this community, its business leaders and patrons who constantly support our students and staff in service to the students. Amen.
Yasmin, if you'll come forward. Yeah, there we go. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this point, I would like to call our meeting to order for our May 13, 2014 School Board Meeting. And, Board members, we've had our agenda for a few days, and I'll ask Dr. Rollins if there are any adjustments or modifications to our agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to add a couple of items. Board, if you'd turn to page two, look at the bullet that item E, and as you can see, there are a number of points there. But at the bottom of that section, E1, I would like to invite our principals at the appropriate time to come forward and talk about the graduation ceremonies, our two traditional high schools and our alternative high schools. So if I could add that item, Mr. President. And then on page three, under item I, excuse me, under the Department of Instruction, item A, we've just received the results of some of our student achievement data based on the state test, and I'd like for Mr. Hendricks to be able to give an overview of that at least tonight. Those two items I would ask to be added, Mr. President.
Okay. Well, we have two adjustments to the agenda, so with those adjustments, I'll accept a motion from a board member.
We move to approve our agenda as amended.
We have a motion from Ms. McFetridge, a second from Mr. Owenby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none, so the agenda will pass. Okay. Also, we have our minutes from our previous meeting that was held on April the 15th. Again, you've had those for a few days, so I will accept a motion on that as well.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Hutchinson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? There is none? Okay, so motion carries. All right, we've reached that part of our meeting where we open the floor up for any patron comments. What I would ask is if you would like to address the board, please give us your name, your address, and if you could, keep your comments brief. We have a full agenda. We won't be able to take any action on your comments this evening, but we would certainly take them up at another time if we have the opportunity. So is there anybody that needs to come before the board during our open session for comments? Okay. Well, with that, Dr. Rollins, I will turn it over to you to recognize some of these great students and staff members.
I had the privilege to be at Springdale High School just a couple of days ago for their senior assembly, and I'm really pleased to invite to the microphone one of the most recognized students at our Springdale High School, Yasmin Chavez. If you would come forward, Yasmin, and I would like to introduce her and then ask her to give any comments that she'd like to make to our board and certainly to our audience. If you would turn to page 16 in your agenda, Board. Again, Yasmin is a senior. Her parents are Leo Bardo and Marcy Chavez. She's currently taking five AP classes and a senior capstone course in engineering design and development. She's a member of the Engineering and Architecture Academy and Springdale's first robotic team, the Gear Hogs, and she's been a member of that group for four years. And Board, I would tell you that it's the Gear Hogs that really helped lead our school district into this robotics competition, which is now almost universal in the schools from elementary to high school. So what a phenomenal job this group of young people has done. And Yasmin, we certainly thank you, and maybe you might have a comment about that in just a moment. She's also a member of band for seven years as a clarinetist. She served as the SHS drum major this year, and she was a section leader her freshman and junior years. She's a member of the Class Council for three years, president this year of the Springdale High School Key Club. She volunteered to help children at the summer robotics camp at the University of Arkansas and the Kelly Middle School, also volunteers at the local First Legos Competition. She plans to pursue a degree in electrical engineering at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology after graduation from Springdale High School. She will participate during the summer of 2014 in MIT's Interface Edge Program, which is a two-year program. We'd also like to hear about that. And she hopes to establish a career in research and development with a focus on robotics for the impaired. What a phenomenal young lady. Help me welcome her, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, the floor is yours.
Hi. I don't know what else to say. That was pretty much all that was on my paper.
You stole all your thunder.
Yeah. Well, you said you wanted to hear about Interface Edge. Interface Edge is a two-year program that I applied for at MIT, and it starts this summer, so I have to be on campus June 25th, and it goes through August 13th. And the program consists of a full course load to prepare you for your freshman year at MIT. That way, you can be better adapted to the rigorous academics. You stay on campus, and you have periods called mandatory fun, where you go to Boston and you explore the city, and I'm really excited about the program.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about just the process of applying, interviewing, and going through the process of being accepted into MIT? I'm not sure how many other folks in the audience may have gone through that before, but I think we would love to hear about that.
Okay. Well, to apply, you have to have taken the ACT or the SAT and two SAT subject tests in either math or science. You'll have to have an interview with an alumni. Mine was with a graduate student who is still studying at MIT. The interview is supposed to last around 45 minutes, but mine lasted two hours. You also have to write five short little essay things, telling what you like to do in your free time, your favorite part of your personality, a short story of the place you come from and what made you who you are today, and then a longer essay about a challenge in your life. And then after all that, I applied early admission, so I heard back in December. And then after you get your acceptance, they send you a silver tube full of confetti and balloons and your acceptance letter. And the purpose of the tube is you're supposed to hack it, because you know it isn't in engineering school, so you turn it into anything you want. Some people turn theirs into microphones or speakers or radios or rockets. I heard of one girl who sent hers into near space, so I haven't had the chance to hack mine, but I'm looking forward to it.
Did you apply to any other schools, and one of those schools where you accepted?
Yes, I applied to five schools total. I was accepted to all of them. I applied to the U of A, Milwaukee School of Engineering, Northeastern University, University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and Northeastern? Did I say that right? Northeastern?
That's good enough.
Yeah.
So did you go to Springdale your whole school career?
I moved to the Springdale School District in the third grade.
Third grade. So what schools have you attended?
And I went to Harp Elementary for like a month, and then I went to Bayari, J.O. Kelly, George, and Springdale High School.
Do you have a teacher that you can remember that made a significant impact on your life?
Yes. I met Ms. Claire Small at engineering camp between sixth and seventh grade. She works at the high school, and she introduced me to the academy at the high school, and once I joined the academy, it was a clear path from there.
We have a lot of students in our audience this evening. What would you share with them on your accomplishments? How did you really get super motivated to accomplish all that you've done?
Just peak of your interest. Do what you're really interested about, because if you join something that you're not really interested in, you're not going to get the most you can out of it. So if you have a passion for it and you do activities that relate to your passion, then you will get the most out of them. Or if you're not that interested, don't be afraid to try new things, because you'll find things that you are interested in.
Very good advice. Very good.
Are your parents here tonight by chance?
No, but my sister is.
Well, where's your sister? She can wave at us. Okay, there we go. Well, you know, when we get our board packet four or five days in advance, and I saw your name, I remember, I think it was about a year ago, that you were here and maybe getting ready to apply for MIT and some other things, and it's amazing to see what you've done. And when you look at your resume, I mean, truly, you are engaged in just about everything at Springdale High School, Mr. Jenkst. Is there anything she missed?
Anything missed by us?
I mean, it is absolutely outstanding, and we couldn't be more proud of you, and we certainly, we'd love for you to be back in Springdale someday, using your great talents that you're going to learn at MIT, and come back to Arkansas, and bless all these kids and families that are here. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Cleveland, where are you?
I'm here.
For those in the audience, we've got, I believe, 32 phenomenal educators who are retiring this year, and we want to recognize them in a very special way, so please help us with that if you would. Dr. Cleveland, if you would do the honors.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rollins. Small speech for me. It's great to be able to honor people who run a great race, and we know that the folks that we recognize tonight aren't ending a race, they're entering a new form of service. Because once you're a servant, you're always a servant, right? Especially when you have that kind of a heart. And we want to recognize our staff who are changing positions as far as where they serve. And there are many. The first of this evening, is Ms. Susannah Campbell in the room?
Yeah.
Oh, there's Ms. Campbell. Ms. Campbell is in the room. I'll read a short statement about Ms. Campbell. So the principals, in fact, I'll do that with all of them, so the principals don't have an opportunity to cry, so I'll do it. Susannah's first exposure to the American culture was at seventeen years of age, the American Field Service Scholarship for one year. In 1990, she worked in her graduate studies at the University of New York at Buffalo. In Peru, she worked as an ESL teacher and director of courses at the Peruvian-North American Language Center for 26 years. She taught at the university level for two years as well. In the United States, Susannah has worked as an ESL teacher three years and ESL instructional facilitator for six at J.O. Kelly, as well as supported the Toyota Family Literacy Program. For the past two years, or excuse me, yeah, for the past two years, she has been an ESL teacher at Sonora Middle School. Susannah is looking forward to her retirement and is planning on supporting an IB implementation at an elementary school in Peru. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Next on our list, Board and Dr. Rollins, is Roger Bruce Culver. Is Mr. Culver in the room? Please come forward, Mr. Culver. Mr. Culver has had 32 years of experience in Arkansas. Mr. Culver came to Springdale High School in 2012 after serving as a teacher and a counselor in Green Forest in Numberville, and has served the students of SHS with diligence and professionalism. His commitment to the students of SHS has been an inspiration to our counseling staff and our faculty. He is truly a player, a team player, and will always be a part of our Red Dog family. Thank you, Mr. Culver. Mr. Rick Davies, are you in the room, Mr. Davies? Anybody see Mr. Davies? Okay. We'll go on to Mary Degui. Is Mary here? Mary, if you don't mind to come forward, please. Mary, thank you for being here. Short statement from the principal, and I'll read this for you, if that's okay, so you don't cry, because I know she said she would. Mary, may God bless you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon Elmdale students and staff with your experience and kindness and compassion. Know that you've made a difference in all our lives, and you will be missed. You will always be a part of the Elmdale family. Thank you very much for your service. Ms. Teresa Dixon, is Ms. Teresa Dixon in the room? Excellent. Please come forward. Ms. Dixon has worked as an educator for 30 years in Springdale. She's a student taught at Elmdale and at Jones Elementary, and she taught at Elmdale Elementary for three years. Her first year teaching, she was the Rookie of the Year. Then she taught at Southwest Junior High for 10 years and was department chair for the Social Studies Department. She was fundamental in the move to middle school education in the district. She worked 12 years at J.O. Kelly Middle School as a geography and English teacher and a library media specialist. She was Teacher of the Year at Southwest Junior High and at J.O. Kelly Middle School. The last five years have been spent working at Harbor High as the library and media specialist. Teresa received a special recognition from Dr. Rollins and the school board for her contributions in introducing outdoor schools. She has a genuine love for the students and her peers, and she will be deeply missed at Springdale Schools. Thank you so much for your service. Ms. Cindy Edwards, is Ms. Cindy Edwards in the room? Very nice, great. Ms. Edwards is retiring after 41 years as an educator. She was a teacher and an administrator in Mississippi for 25 years before moving to Springdale. She taught reading for 13 years at J.O. Kelly Middle School, then moved to the Language Academy at Harbor High School to teach reading for the last four years. She will be remembered for her dedication to the Language Academy, her love for all students, and the friendship she extended to all her colleagues. Thank you so much. (Applause).
All right, we've reached that part of our meeting where we open the floor up for any patron comments. What I would ask is if you would like to address the board, please give us your name, your address, and if you could, keep your comments brief. We have a full agenda. We won't be able to take any action on your comments this evening, but we would certainly take them up at another time if we have the opportunity. So is there anybody that needs to come before the board during our open session for comments? Okay. Well, with that, Dr. Rollins, I will turn it over to you to recognize some of these great students and staff members.
I had the privilege to be at Springdale High School just a couple of days ago for their senior assembly, and I'm really pleased to invite to the microphone one of the most recognized students at our Springdale High School, Yasmin Chavez. If you would come forward, Yasmin, and I would like to introduce her and then ask her to give any comments that she'd like to make to our board and certainly to our audience. If you would turn to page 16 in your agenda, Board. Again, Yasmin is a senior. Her parents are Leo Bardo and Marcy Chavez. She's currently taking five AP classes and a senior capstone course in engineering, design, and development. She's a member of the Engineering and Architecture Academy and Springdale's first robotic team, the Gear Hogs, and she's been a member of that group for four years. And Board, I would tell you that it's the Gear Hogs that really helped lead our school district into this robotics competition, which is now almost universal in the schools from elementary to high school. So what a phenomenal job this group of young people has done, and Yasmin, we certainly thank you, and maybe you might have a comment about that in just a moment. She's also a member of band for seven years as a clarinettist. She served as the SHS drum major this year, and she was a section leader her freshman and junior years. She's a member of the Class Council for three years, president this year of the Springdale High School Key Club. She volunteered to help children at the summer robotics camp at the University of Arkansas and the Kelly Middle School, also volunteers at the local First Legos Competition. She plans to pursue a degree in electrical engineering at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology after graduation from Springdale High School. She will participate during the summer of 2014 in MIT's Interface Edge Program, which is a two-year program. We'd also like to hear about that. And she hopes to establish a career in research and development with a focus on robotics for the impaired. What a phenomenal young lady. Help me welcome her, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, the floor is yours.
Hi. I don't know what else to say. That was pretty much all that was on my paper.
You stole all your thunder.
Yeah. Well, you said you wanted to hear about Interface Edge. Interface Edge is a two-year program that I applied for at MIT, and it starts this summer, so I have to be on campus June 25th, and it goes through August 13th. And the program consists of a full course load to prepare you for your freshman year at MIT. That way, you can be better adapted to the rigorous academics. You stay on campus, and you have periods called mandatory fun, where you go to Boston and you explore the city, and I'm really excited about the program.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about just the process of applying, interviewing, and going through the process of being accepted into MIT? I'm not sure how many other folks in the audience may have gone through that before, but I think we would love to hear about that.
Okay. Well, to apply, you have to have taken the ACT or the SAT and two SAT subject tests in either math or science. You'll have to have an interview with an alumni. Mine was with a graduate student who is still studying at MIT. The interview is supposed to last around 45 minutes, but mine lasted two hours. You also have to write five short little essay things, telling what you like to do in your free time, your favorite part of your personality, a short story of the place you come from and what made you who you are today, and then a longer essay about a challenge in your life. And then after all that, I applied early admission, so I heard back in December, and then after you get your acceptance, they send you a silver tube full of confetti and balloons and your acceptance letter. And the purpose of the tube is you're supposed to hack it, because you know it isn't in engineering school, so you turn it into anything you want. Some people turn theirs into microphones or speakers or radios or rockets. I heard of one girl who sent hers into near space, so I haven't had the chance to hack mine, but I'm looking forward to it.
Did you apply to any other schools, and one of those schools where you accepted?
Yes, I applied to five schools total. I was accepted to all of them. I applied to the U of A, Milwaukee School of Engineering, Northeastern University, University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and Northeastern? Did I say that right? Northeastern?
That's good enough.
Yeah.
So did you go to Springdale your whole school career?
I moved to the Springdale School District in the third grade.
Third grade. So what schools have you attended?
And I went to Harp Elementary for like a month, and then I went to Bayari, J.O. Kelly, George, and Springdale High School.
Do you have a teacher that you can remember that made a significant impact on your life?
Yes. I met Ms. Claire Small at engineering camp between sixth and seventh grade. She works at the high school, and she introduced me to the academy at the high school, and once I joined the academy, it was a clear path from there.
We have a lot of students in our audience this evening. What would you share with them on your accomplishments? How did you really get super motivated to accomplish all that you've done?
Just peak of your interest. Do what you're really interested about, because if you join something that you're not really interested in, you're not going to get the most you can out of it. So if you have a passion for it and you do activities that relate to your passion, then you will get the most out of them. Or if you're not that interested, don't be afraid to try new things, because you'll find things that you are interested in.
Very good advice. Very good.
Are your parents here tonight by chance?
No, but my sister is.
Well, where's your sister? She can wave at us. Okay, there we go. Well, you know, when we get our board packet four or five days in advance, and I saw your name, I remember, I think it was about a year ago, that you were here and maybe getting ready to apply for MIT and some other things, and it's amazing to see what you've done. And when you look at your resume, I mean, truly, you are engaged in just about everything at Springdale High School, Mr. Jenkst. Is there anything she missed?
Anything missed by us?
I mean, it is absolutely outstanding, and we couldn't be more proud of you, and we certainly, we'd love for you to be back in Springdale someday, using your great talents that you're going to learn at MIT, and come back to Arkansas, and bless all these kids and families that are here. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Cleveland, where are you?
I'm here.
For those in the audience, we've got, I believe, 32 phenomenal educators who are retiring this year, and we want to recognize them in a very special way, so please help us with that if you would. Dr. Cleveland, if you would do the honors.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rollins.
... or the SAT and two SAT subject tests in either math or science. You'll have to have an interview with an alumni. Mine was with a graduate student who is still studying at MIT. The interview is supposed to last around forty-five minutes, but mine lasted two hours. You also have to write five short little essay things telling what you like to do in your free time, your favorite part of your personality, a short story of the place you come from and what made you who you are today, and then a longer essay about a challenge in your life. And then after all that, I applied early admission, so I heard back in December. And then after you get your acceptance, they send you a silver tube full of confetti and balloons and your acceptance letter. And the purpose of the tube is you're supposed to hack it, because you know it isn't in engineering school, so you turn it into anything you want. Some people turn theirs into microphones, or speakers, or radios, or rockets. I heard of one girl who sent hers into near space. So I haven't had the chance to hack mine, but I'm looking forward to it.
Did you apply to any other schools? And what other schools were you accepted?
Yes, I applied to five schools total. I was accepted to all of them. I applied to the U of A, Milwaukee School of Engineering, Northeastern University, University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and Northeastern? Did I say that right? Northeastern?
That's good enough.
Yeah.
So did you go to Springdale your whole school career?
I moved to the Springdale School District in the third grade.
Third grade. So what schools have you attended?
And I went to Harp Elementary for like a month, and then I went to Bay Area, J.O. Kelly, George, and Springdale High School.
Do you have a teacher that you can remember that made a significant impact on your life?
Yes. I met Ms. Claire Small at engineering camp between sixth and seventh grade. She works at the high school. And she introduced me to the academy at this high school. And once I joined the academy, it was a clear path from there.
We have a lot of students in our audience this evening. What would you share with them on your accomplishments? How did you really get super motivated to accomplish all that you've done?
Just peak of your interest. Do what you're really interested about, because if you join something that you're not really interested in, you're not going to get the most you can out of it. So if you have a passion for it, and you do activities that relate to your passion, then you will get the most out of them. Or if you're not that interested, don't be afraid to try new things, because you'll find things that you are interested in.
Are your parents here tonight by chance?
No, but my sister is.
Well, where's your sister? She can wave at us. Okay, there we go. Well, you know, when we get our board packet four or five days in advance, and I saw your name, I remember, I think it was about a year ago, that you were here and maybe getting ready to apply for MIT and some other things. And it's amazing to see what you've done. And when you look at your resume, I mean, truly, you are engaged in just about everything at Springdale High School, Mr. Jenkst. Is there anything she missed?
I didn't miss anything.
I mean, it is absolutely outstanding, and we couldn't be more proud of you. And we certainly, we'd love for you to be back in Springdale someday, using your great talents that you're going to learn at MIT, and come back to Arkansas. And bless all these kids and families that are here. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Cleveland, where are you?
I'm here.
For those in the audience, we've got, I believe, thirty-two phenomenal educators who are retiring this year. And we want to recognize them in a very special way, so please help us with that, if you would. Dr. Cleveland, if you would do the honors.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rollins. Small speech for me. It's great to be able to honor people who run a great race. And we know that the folks that we recognize tonight aren't ending a race, they're entering a new form of service. Because once you're a servant, you're always a servant, right? Especially when you have that kind of a heart. And we want to recognize our staff who are changing positions as far as where they serve. And there are many. The first of this evening, is Ms. Susannah Campbell in the room?
Yeah.
Oh, there's Ms. Campbell. Ms. Campbell is in the room. I'll read a short statement about Ms. Campbell. So the principals, in fact, I'll do that with all of them, so the principals don't have an opportunity to cry, so I'll do it. Susannah's first exposure to the American culture was at seventeen years of age, the American Field Service Scholarship for one year. In 1990, she worked in her graduate studies at the University of New York at Buffalo. In Peru, she worked as an ESL teacher and director of courses at the Peruvian North American Language Center for twenty-six years. She taught at the university level for two years as well. In the United States, Susannah has worked as an ESL teacher three years, an ESL instructional facilitator for six at J.O. Kelly, as well as supported the Toyota Family Literacy Program. For the past two years, oh, excuse me. Yeah. For the past two years, she has been an ESL teacher at Sonora Middle School. Susannah is looking forward to her retirement, and is planning on supporting an IB implementation at an elementary school in Peru. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Next on our list, board and Dr. Rollins, is Roger Bruce Culver. Is Mr. Culver in the room? Please come forward, Mr. Culver. Mr. Culver has had thirty-two years of experience in Arkansas. Mr. Culver came to Springdale High School in 2012 after serving as a teacher and a counselor in Green Forest in Nunbarival, and has served the students of S.H.S. with diligence and professionalism. His commitment to the students of S.H.S. has been an inspiration to our counseling staff and our faculty. He is truly a player, a team player, and will always be a part of our Red Dog family. Thank you, Mr. Culver. Mr. Rick Davies, are you in the room, Mr. Davies? Anybody see Mr. Davies? Okay. We'll go on to Mary Degui. Is Mary here? Mary, if you don't mind to come forward, please. Mary, thank you for being here. Short statement from the principal. And I'll read this for you, if that's okay, so you don't cry, because I know she said she would. Mary, may God bless you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon Elmdale students and staff with your experience and kindness and compassion. Know that you've made a difference in all our lives, and you will be missed. You will always be a part of the Elmdale family. Thank you very much for your service. Ms. Teresa Dixon, is Ms. Teresa Dixon in the room? Excellent. Please come forward. Ms. Dixon has worked as an educator for thirty years in Springdale. She's a student taught at Elmdale and at Jones Elementary, and she taught at Elmdale Elementary for three years. Her first year teaching, she was the Rookie of the Year. Then she taught at Southwest Junior High for ten years, and was department chair for the Social Studies Department. She was fundamental in the move to middle school education in the district. She worked twelve years at J.O. Kelly Middle School as a geography and English teacher and a library media specialist. She was Teacher of the Year at Southwest Junior High and at J.O. Kelly Middle School. The last five years have been spent working at Harbor High as the library and media specialist. Teresa received a special recognition from Dr. Rollins and the school board for her contributions in introducing outdoor schools. She has a genuine love for the students and her peers, and she will be deeply missed at Springdale Schools. Thank you so much for your service. Ms. Cindy Edwards, is Ms. Cindy Edwards in the room? Very nice, great. Ms. Edwards is retiring after forty-one years as an educator. She was a teacher and an administrator in Mississippi for twenty-five years before moving to Springdale. She taught reading for thirteen years at J.O. Kelly Middle School, then moved to the Language Academy at Harbor High School to teach reading for the last four years. She will be remembered for her dedication to the Language Academy, her love for all students, and the friendships she extended to all her colleagues. Thank you so much. Ms. Catherine Eifert, Ms. Eifert in the room? All right.
I'm Angie.
Okay. Well, we'll call you Angie. All right. Ms. Angie Eifert. Ms. Angie Eifert has been teaching for thirty years. She's provided thirty years of service to our students. She has served with a tender heart and a ready smile. Is that accurate? It appears to be so. Thirty-two. Thirty-two years. It says thirty, but okay, thirty-two. Ms. Eifert has taught each child as they needed to be taught, and supported them in reaching their academic goals. She's amassed thirty-two years of knowledge in the area of special education, and she has used the knowledge to provide differentiated instruction for students throughout our district. It's been our honor to have Ms. Eifert as a part of our school community. Thank you, Ms. Eifert, on behalf of all the students you've served and set up for success. Thank you for seeing the potential and the promise in each child, and celebrate your retirement. It's your time to shine. Thank you so much. Ms. Diana Fuqua, are you in the room? Excellent. Ms. Fuqua has been teaching mathematics for thirty-seven years. Thirty-seven, just make sure I'm correct. She's worked with the students of Springdale High School both in and out of the classroom, not only serving as a math teacher, but being a sponsor of the National Honor Society Stand, which is a drug awareness club, junior class council, and senior class council. Diana has always gone above and beyond the call of duty, such as being available to help students before and after school, or even during her planning period. She's shown her support to students by becoming involved not only in their academic endeavors, but also countless extracurricular activities, like band and chorus, athletic competitions, and so forth. Her dedication to teaching and her commitment to the students over the years have made Diana the teacher every parent would like to see their child have. She will be missed at Springdale High School, but will always be a member of our Red Dog family. Thank you so much for your service. Ms. Catherine Suzanne Harris, are you in the room? She's a speech pathologist. There she is. How are you doing? Nice to see you again. Ms. Harris grew up in Conway and attended the University of Arkansas from 1970 to 74, where she received a degree in speech therapy. If I say anything wrong, you tell me, okay? She began working Conway as a mental, at a mental health clinic, serving preschool students through adults. She served such children with disabilities, and stroke, and brain trauma, and other emotionally and mentally handicapped children with language delays. Around 1976, she helped establish some of the first speech programs in Conway schools at the junior high level. She's since worked in a school setting, either preschool or school age, from kindergarten to twelfth grade. Some of her schools were Charleston, Scranton, Wonderview, Kesa, back before it was Perry Kesa, right? Hot Springs, and a school in Oklahoma. She and her husband moved to northwest Arkansas, and for the past three years, she's worked at the middle school, junior high, and high school levels in Springdale. She looks forward to her retirement, but she's loved her forty years of service as a speech pathologist. We thank you for your service to Springdale Schools. Jean Huffman, is Jean Huffman in the room? Excellent, as she's coming down. Ms. Huffman is a master teacher who served children for over twenty-nine years. Jean has a servant's heart for every student whom she comes into contact with. Her peers admire Jean for being a role model, a cheerleader for her team, and for always having a positive outlook on life. Jean has built relationships with parents and students over the years that will last a lifetime. Springdale has been fortunate to have a teacher with such class, such grace, in serving their students. Thank you so much, Ms. Huffman, for your service. Carol Jones, is Carol Jones in the room? As Ms. Jones is making her way to the front. A model classroom, day in and day out, of effective teaching strategies, personalization of learning, investment of students of their self and her in them, commitment to each student's learning and doing things the right way. Students and teachers at J.O. Kelly have considered it a privilege to work with Ms. Carol Jones. Her leadership, love of learning, love of teaching, and most of all, commitment to students has been an example to all. Steady leadership, steady instruction, dependable and loyal. We will surely miss Ms. Carol Jones at J.O. Kelly Middle School. Thank you for your service. Ms. Susan Keen, is Ms. Keen in the room?
Yes, I thought I saw Ms. Keen.
Ms. Keen, have you taught for thirty years? Okay. Ms. Susan Keen has provided thirty years of service to students throughout Springdale. Approximately eight-hundred-and-forty students and their families have been positively impacted by Ms. Keen over the last three decades. Long before personalized learning became a catchphrase in education, Ms. Keen provided personalized learning for her students, Dr. Rollins. The relationships Ms. Keen fostered with each of her students and her families enabled her to set each child up for success. Remember the theme from the old Cheers television show where everybody knows your name? Ms. Keen's students always knew they were important and that they were safe in her classroom. Everybody knew each other, and everyone supported each other's learning. Thank you, Ms. Keen, for providing the kind of classroom every child deserves to have. Celebrate your retirement, and it's your time to shine. In fact, there is a quote by a former student of Ms. Keen that I need to read. "I can't remember exactly what you taught me, but I remember well how you made me feel." That is Shay Baldwin. Joe Martinson, is Joe Martinson in the room? Excellent. Ms. Martinson helped open J.O. Kelly Middle School in 1995, and most recently has served as the math instructional facilitator at J.O. Kelly. She's a master teacher and has been a true leader both in the building and in the district with regard to math instruction and best practice. She was a district trainer for data modeling and statistical reasoning, fostering geometrical thinking and transforming middle-level instruction. She was one of the first teachers to work with connected math, and was an instrumental person in the development of, and one of the first teachers in, the University of Arkansas GK-through-12 project. Her team was recognized statewide as the team that makes the difference. However, Ms. Martinson's biggest acclaim is what she did in the classroom year after year. Her students have consistently made huge academic gains, as well as gaining much-needed skill and confidence with math. Many of Ms. Martinson's students have gone on to study upper-level math and engineering in college. She leaves a huge legacy at J.O. Kelly, and she embodies the spirit of excellence, and has helped define the J.O. Kelly spirit. Thank you for your service. Is Mr. Bruce Miller in the room? As Mr. Miller makes his way to the front. Mr. Miller has taught school for twenty-eight years. Nine of those years have been in Springdale School District. He served at Harbor High School for the last seven years, and at Springdale High the two years prior. Bruce's work ethic has been greatly appreciated, and his contributions to our math department will be missed. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller, for your service. Ms. Betsy Penix? I think I saw Ms. Betsy. There she is, there she is. I was fortunate enough to be with her in Little Rock the other day at a Economics Arkansas event, where she and her students did very well, so proud. Ms. Betsy Penix has been a teacher in our district for twenty-eight and a half years, correct? Okay. With twenty-five and a half of those years serving the students in Springdale, she's retiring from her position as a gifted and talented teacher. Betsy has demonstrated her passion and enthusiasm for teaching to every end. Not only has she given her all for her GT students, but she's been highly involved in several extracurricular for our students' success in chess club, riding knights, and the development of Walker rain gardens. Is that correct? Betsy Penix will be missed, and enjoys, we hope she enjoys her retirement with her grandbabies. Is that right? That's where you're headed, right? Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Penix, for your contribution. Ms. Shelley Perry, is Ms. Shelley Perry in the room?
Yes.
I thought I saw her.
Yes.
Here she is, there she is. Shelley has taught for forty-four consecutive years. She's taught first, the second, third, and sixth grade. Shelley has been a middle school principal and an elementary school principal. She taught three years in Texas, thirty in Kansas, and retired from Kansas. Shelley's been in Arkansas for eleven years now. She was an IF at Westwood, and has spent her last two at Sonora Middle School as an instructional facilitator for literacy. Shelley looks forward to traveling and visiting her grandchildren in Colorado. Thank you for your service to our district. Is Ms. Ann Ratcliffe in the room? Excellent. Ms. Ann is in the room. Ms. Ann Ratcliffe's teaching career spans forty-three years. She began at age twenty. She taught in Louisiana, Oregon. Is that right?
She's a man.
You must have been a high achiever early on. And finally, she's been in Arkansas. Ms. Ratcliffe became employed by the Springdale School District in 1992. Her dedication and commitment to her students is evident in her twenty-two-year teaching career at Springdale High School. Through her years here, she's taught sophomore, junior, and senior concurrent English classes. Ann will retire to her mountain retreat near Devil's Den with her husband Bill and commune with Mother Nature. She will always be a member of our Red Dog family. Enjoy your retirement. Thank you, we have a gift for you. Is Ms. Vicky Rogerson in the room?
She's here. She's here.
Oh, here she is. Hi, Ms. Rogerson. Ms. Vicky Rogerson was instrumental in helping start the Springdale Pre-K program. Ms. Rogerson, how many kids do we have in the Pre-K program today? Eight-hundred-and-forty, and next year it'll be nine-hundred, and actually, possibly a little more. Thank you so much for your service to the Pre-K program. You've been instrumental and a valuable asset to the district. Your legacy will live on in all of those young children who go through our system. Thank you so much for your service. Ms. Kathy Schimming, is she in the room? There she is. Ms. Schimming has served the district with distinction as a teacher in Springdale Schools for twenty years. Her career spanned twenty-six years altogether. She's taught in both Tennessee and in Arkansas. Her elementary career includes having taught first, third, fourth, and fifth grades. Kathy is passionate about children, genuinely caring, and is an exemplar at building relationships with kids and families. You can't find Kathy in the lounge at lunch. She eats with her students nearly each day. Kathy's instruction yields results, as evidenced by her strong achievement data in recent years. She's respected by the staff at Lee Elementary, regularly being nominated for Lee Elementary Teacher of the Year. The administration, teachers, parents, and students of Lee Elementary appreciates her service and dedication. Thank you so much, and enjoy your retirement. Dr. Rollins, we have one last person to recognize tonight in retirement. A man that's worked his life mostly in administration, thirty-two years of those years as an administrator, three years as Shallow Christian Schools principal, in fact, he was the first principal at Shallow Christian, two years as Southwest Junior High Assistant Principal, three years as Springdale High School Assistant Principal, and twenty-four years as principal of Southwest Junior High. Tonight, Dr. Rollins, we'd like to honor Mr. Bryce Wagner. Mr. Wagner, would you like to say anything this evening?
I remember when Ms. Rowark retired from Central Junior High, she took advantage of that five-minute opportunity for patrons to speak. And I thought about that tonight, but it was a crowd, and I thought, maybe I shouldn't. But I will say that being a principal and administrator in Springdale Schools has been a highlight and a privilege, and it's made me very proud. Always proud to say I'm from Springdale, because, as you know, in state circles and even national circles, Springdale says something to people all over. And that's due in part to Dr. Rollins and his staff, this wonderful board that I've so enjoyed working under. And I just can't say how much I appreciate you all and what you've done here in Springdale. Thank you very much.
Dr. Rollins, members of the board, there are a few others that have retired but were unable to be here, and I would like to put in the record and recognize them. Ms. Patricia Bell, a library media specialist at Central Junior High, she served in Springdale for thirty-eight years and a total of forty-one years. We have also Ms. Rebecca Cavender. She's a band director at Central Junior High. She served twenty-five years and eight and a half in our district. We have Mr. Clinton Ray Doss at Central Junior High. Thirty-one years total, thirty-one years in our district. Kathryn Ferguson is a counselor at Bay Area. She served for forty-three years and nine in our district. Ms. Lori Foster is an art teacher at Central Junior High. She served for twenty-two and a half years and twelve years in our district. Ms. Deborah Ann Hunt, she's a third-grade teacher at Tyson Elementary. She served for a total of thirty-one and a half years, with twenty-nine in Springdale. We have Ms. Christine Klein. She's a teacher of the visually impaired. She works for the district all along, around the district where she's needed. Twenty-six years total, seventeen years in Springdale. We have Mr. Robert Lennox, a teacher at Archer Learning Center. He's served for fourteen years, and five and a half of those in Springdale. We also have Ms. Vicky Lowe. She's a library media specialist at Springdale High School. Twenty-seven years in our district and thirty-one total. Two more. Ms. Susan Shelton is a music teacher at Parson Hills. She retired earlier in the year. Thirty-seven years total and thirty-five in our district. And finally, Ms. Elaine Teague. She's a sixth-grade language arts teacher at Kelly Middle School. Twenty-six years total and fifteen years in the district. Dr. Rollins, that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Great job. Thank you, teachers. Mr. President, it's a pleasure for me to introduce our principal at Helen Tyson Middle School, Ms. Susan Buchanan. She has some very special announcements to make. Welcome, Susan.
Well, there's some great work that's gone before me. I see that with all of these wonderful teachers that are retiring and have given their life and their love for students. But we have students also that are continuing to achieve under awesome teachers in the district. And I'd like for Miller, Herndon, and Molly Kingston, and Ms. Berry to come forward, if These are two of our East students at Helen Tyson Middle School. And Miller and Molly both participated in the University of Arkansas Industrial Engineering Challenge in April. And I'd like Ms. Berry to tell you some of the things that these students have accomplished, and also some of the competition that they were involved in.
We're lucky in northwest Arkansas to be close to such a great academic institution as the University of Arkansas. And they do many partnerships through the university to give our students an early head start on developing their interest in careers and technology. The engineering department at the University of Arkansas this year hosted their eighth annual industrial engineering department through their industrial engineering program to introduce students to some early concepts and technology involved in designing, particularly in this case, buildings that get used by people. Through the competition, the students participated in what started out really fun for them, a game that taught them the concepts of how to build a hospital, how the building structure affects the care of patients, how you have to build rooms at certain sizes in order to meet certain needs, to meet certain financial gains, and to allow employment. to meet certain needs, to meet certain financial gains, and to allow employees to do good jobs. And so the students were given the opportunity to participate in this, build a presentation, create a video, and submit a paper as well in order to be chosen to participate in the competition. And then, once we were there, and Miller will tell you more about it, they were treated to an amazing introductory experience of the engineering department that I wish all of our students could have because the opportunities abound there. And it was just amazing what those students are doing and what our students are eventually capable of doing. So I will turn it over to Miller to tell you more about the experience.
The experience of the U of A was really interesting. During the competition, each group presented all the students and teachers about their projects. There were six teams in the junior division, and Molly and I placed first. What really caught my eye when going through the tour was the dune buggy competition. I was really amazed that they had competitions for boat racing, dune buggy racing, and metal plane competitions. During the tour, we were able to see parts, both mechanical engineering department and the biomedical engineering department. The best part of the experience was that we got six hundred bucks.[677.69][677.69][laughter]
Well, before Miller and I even got to go to the U of A to present our project, we had to prepare everything. We learned how to get, we had to learn how to get the game open, how to play it, and how to demonstrate what we were learning by creating a video that had to be uploaded to YouTube. To get to the game, we had to learn how to directly open the game by coding. To get, playing the game taught me the flow of patients, how they came into the hospital, and how to react to it. We learned what is important when building a hospital and how design affects money and the health of the patients. Our final presentation was made using Prezi and many screenshots. We took by mastering the game.
Good, all right.[722.32][722.32][applause] So what do you plan to do with the money that you won?
For shopping.
Pardon me?
Go shopping.
Go shopping. Are you gonna go shopping also?
No, I was, I'm gonna put towards my college.
Towards your college? Okay, well, good, good. My boy, all right. Well, if you ever need help, you know, to interview at MIT, we've got somebody that can help you do that, too, so. If you got other questions, anybody else? Well, congratulations. Sounds like a neat experience. Are your parents here?[758.86][758.86][applause]
Ms. Berry also received two hundred dollars for our school.
Oh, good.
And that will go to our East program.
So do we have some parents of these two students?
We do. We have parents, if they could please stand up.
They're waving, okay.
We have the Herdons back here.
Fantastic, well, that's great.[779.32][779.32][applause] She's gotta go shopping.
Absolutely.
And he has to go to college.
That's right.[792.11][792.11][laughter]
In that order. The second recognition that I'd like to make tonight is I'd like Sojas Wagle to please come up. And also, I would like Ms. Debbie Houston to come up with him. Springdale is known for thinking out of the box. And so one of the things we did this year was we Skyped our classes through Helen Tyson to Southwest. And Sojas participated in the ACTM Algebra State Competition in Little, and that was in Conway, Sojas. And there were approximately a hundred students that competed during, and they were in grades seven, which he represented grade seven, up to tenth grade. So he was competing with kids that were lots, lots older than him. And Sojas placed first in this competition. He received a trophy and received approximately a two-hundred-dollar graphing calculator that he's got there, and he's very proud of that. I want to also give recognition to Ms. Houston. She's been quite the fan of Sojas and Megan this year, both of them Skyping their algebra class. And she accompanied Sojas to the meet, and she's been kind of there cheering him on along with all of our Helen Tyson staff. So we wanted to take time to recognize Sojas tonight. And of course, Sojas has been here before, but he's won Spelling Bee, Geography Bee, pretty much every competition that comes into place at Helen Tyson Middle School. So Sojas, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, whenever I first heard I got first place, I was like really excited and really surprised. And lots of work paid off, like lots of weeks of hard work with my algebra teacher, Ms. Houston. And it's just, it was a really good experience to see like other competition around the state. And I was really excited to show everyone else how I improved through the year on my algebra skills. Yeah, and I'm gonna be doing, planning to do geometry and Algebra II next year, and I'm hoping to do the ACTM competition for those as well.
I think Sojas' parents are here tonight, if they would withstand.[966.57][966.57][applause]
Well, congratulations. I suspect you'll be teaching that Algebra II and Geometry class pretty soon, too. So that's great.
I'm gonna ask Sojas and Ms. Buchanan to come back. We have our Duke Talent Search Award winners who were recognized at various levels. Ms. Buchanan is here, Dr. Lyons is here, and I believe Mr. Donnell is here as well, representing Hellstern. And if y'all would also invite your students who are here to come to the podium, please. Bring your students with you. While they're coming, let me tell you a little bit about the Duke Talent Search. The Duke Talent Search is a national program that invites qualifying students to take either the ACT or the SAT College entrance exam as a seventh grader, which is usually about two years early. Participants qualify by scoring at least at the ninety-fifth percentile on their regular standardized tests. And they are, this kind of testing gives the parents some insight pretty early into their child's academic abilities. The special state awards ceremonies are also held nationally, so families can and celebrate their outstanding achievement. Springdale students have been invited to attend this month, I think it's, I believe it's next week, the state recognition in Little Rock. And we also have four of our students who have been invited to the national recognition at Duke this summer. So I'm gonna ask our students up here if you will introduce yourselves and tell us, you know, that you're, all of these students will be recognized at the state level. Those of you who will also be recognized at the national level, that you've earned that honor, if you would also tell us who you are, too. So let me do this. Can I, okay, where, let's start on this end.
Dr. Morlich, can we have them kind of spread out so we really get a look at all?
Oh, yeah, yes. Make a long, thin line, guys.
Guys are trying to hide back there.
Yeah. We got, the board wants to see your faces. Okay, can y'all kind of spread out? Come on down a little bit.[1114.88][1114.88][laughter] Okay. All right. We'll start down here on this end. I'm gonna let you pass the microphone down, okay?
I am Benjamin Williams, and I was recognized at state level for taking the ACT. Helen Tyson.
I'm Sojas Wagle from Helen Tyson, and I was recognized for national and state Duke TIP search.
I'm Megan Boyce from Helen Tyson, and I was recognized at national for taking the ACT.
I'm John Robertson, and I was recognized for state from Helen Tyson.
I'm Alec Creasel, and I was recognized for the state, I guess, and I am at Hellstern.
I am Jackson Black. I'm from Hellstern, and I was recognized at national and state levels.
I am Clay Kilmer. I am from Hellstern, and I was recognized at state level.
I am Ian Sireo from Hellstern, and I was also recognized at state level.
I am Trent Arney from Hellstern, and I am recognized at state level.
I'm Alex Larson from Hellstern, and I was recognized at state and national level.
I am Shannon Boland. I'm from Hellstern Middle School, and I was recognized for state level.
I'm Samantha Garcia from Sonora Middle School, and I was recognized state level.
I'm Savannah Pullos, and I'm at Hellstern, and I was recognized at state level.
I'm Abigail Scott, and I'm from Hellstern, and I got recognized for state level.
I'm Reagan Couch, and I'm from Hellstern Middle School, and I was recognized at state level.
I'm Olivia Carter. I'm from Helen Tyson, and I was recognized at state level.
I'm Delaney Sexton from Helen Tyson, and I was recognized at state level.
I'm Riley Pittman from Hellstern Middle School, and I was recognized at state recognition.
I'm Hamad Mihal from Hellstern Middle School, and I was recognized at state level.
I'm Benjamin Tan from Hellstern Middle School, and I was recognized at state level.[1250.26][1250.26][applause]
Obviously, boy, we are incredibly proud of these students. And we, you know, as noted before, we have students who are going to MIT next year. So you guys may want to talk to Yesman before you leave tonight, find out how you do that. How about parents? Do we have parents in the audience? Parents, where are you? Thank you very much, and we are very, very proud of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Board, we'd also, tonight, we would like to recognize, we as, as we often do, have some winners at our stock market game. So let me invite the teachers up, and if you come with your students. We have Mr. Brantley from Lakeside, Mr. Ross from Harbor, and Ms. Betsy Penix from Walker. In the stock market game, it's for students in grades four through twelve. And the teams are given a hundred-thousand-dollar portfolio that they're asked to invest. And I'd, we have teams from all of the district this year. There are six different regions. The elementary division is for grades four through six. Junior high is for grades seven through nine. High school is for ten, twelve. There are about fifty-five hundred Arkansas students who participated this year. And Springdale students are being recognized today as part of that top three percent. So once again, we are very, very proud of them. One thing I do want to acknowledge, Ms. Vanderspicken works very hard every year. Wish that she could be here tonight, but frankly, she can't talk. Her voice is not, not good enough to talk tonight. But Ms. Vanderspicken, every year, manages to get scholarships so that we can have students to participate in this without having to bear the huge burden of the fees with this. These students were invited to an awards luncheon at Verizon Arena in Little Rock on April thirtieth. And Mr. Brantley's students gave the keynote address and had been invited back to speak to Economics Arkansas. So I'm going to, once again, I want to, these students to introduce themselves. And we want the teachers to introduce themselves, too. So please tell us your name, what school.
Justin Brantley from Lakeside Junior High. And I just want to say real quick that I'm really proud of these kids. They did a fantastic job. Like she said, they did amazing and got invited back. So we'll be going back on May twentieth. And I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Rollins for the technology that was in place for us to do these things. Without that, we wouldn't be able to do the research and find the stocks that we like. And I'm not sure if they'll tell you what they bought, but they might if you ask. Here they go.
I'm Jackson Miller at Lakeside.
I'm Kat Greer at Lakeside.
Oh, are you gonna, are you gonna say? Oh. Okay.
Well, I was gonna say that it was good to participate in this game. It was really fun, and I learned from it, and I would do it next year.
Betsy Penix from Walker, and I'd like to introduce my students. This is Cam, Cameron Rader. They're all in the fourth grade. Sadie Buttram and Jonas Brown. And they increased their portfolio by ten thousand dollars in eight weeks. Thus, we got to go to Little Rock. And I'd just like to thank the board for sponsoring so much economics because this is one of the highlights of fourth grade gifted and talented. Y'all have anything you want to say?[1541.83][1541.83][laughter]
My name's Jess Ross. I teach economics at Harbor. I have four students that were, they won second place this year, and they couldn't make it tonight. High school kids, of course, have other things they like to do, I guess.[1563.41][1563.41][laughter] Than standing in front of people and talk. One of the things I like about this, and it's really a great way to facilitate education through interaction, and the kids are really into the technology and the use of it. Although we don't have access to a lab every day, they can get this stuff right on their iPhones. I mean, it's right there. Sometimes, I remember last year, a student was standing right in front of me when the door opened, and he's like, "Look, Mr. Ross, right here on my phone. Look, what, what do you think I should do here or there?" And it's a great way to interact with students and just facilitate education in economics. So Keely Ames Lovett, Ashley Rocco, Taylor Helms, and I'm missing one. Hang on.[1613.21][1613.21][laughter] I knew I'd forget one. Jose Cantu were the kids that participated this year for me.
I've got a question.
Okay, okay.
Okay, the ones from Lakeside, were you on the same team? I know you scored in first and second place.
Yeah, this was actually, she was on the first-place team, and she was on the second-place team. There were other members that had football in the band and other things, who wanted to make it.
Okay, so you-
They actually finished second overall, I believe.
Okay. And so you started with a hundred thousand. What was it at the, when the game ended? What did you turn your hundred thousand into? Do you remember?
I think it ended about one thirty-nine.
Okay, all right. And how about you?
Eight weeks. Ten weeks. Ten weeks, wow.
It's just money. Yeah, okay.[1667.26][1667.26][laughter] I didn't mean to interrupt you, Dr. Morlich. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
How about parents? We have parents out here in the audience? Parents, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. Thank you very much for your support. All right, and thank you, and congratulations, and we look forward to hearing more from you. Thank you very much.
Particularly some specific stock names would be nice, so.
Have fun, Betsy. I know you never knock. I would like to invite Ms. Sarah Ford and Leslie Harrelson to come to the podium.
Scholastic Awards Outstanding Educators in the use of some of their systems. We have one of the systems that we use with our students, it's a software package called System Forty-Four. And I'm gonna read to you what was written about Ms. Harrelson. As someone who struggled to read, learned to read herself, Ms. Harrelson made it her goal in life to become a reading teacher. Having taught System Forty-Four for more than four years, Mrs. Harrelson encourages her students to take charge of their learning and never give up. She was a driving force behind a collaboration with fellow educators and leaders in her district, created to determine the best approach for meeting the needs of all students. Through that effort, she was instrumental in the narrowing of the achievement gap in both mathematics and literacy at J.O. Kelly. A high expectation for both academics and behavior is the guiding principle for Mrs. Harrelson's classroom. Her students, many of whom once struggled with language barriers and have mostly experienced failure in the past, are now leaders in the classroom and on the athletic fields. Mrs. Harrelson encouraged me to, one student said, "Mrs. Harrelson encouraged me to read when I was ready to give up and talked to me about-" and talked to me about how I'll need reading in the future." He said, "I told her I wanted to be a soccer player, so she asked me how was I going to read the contract. That's when everything clicked." Ms. Ford, Ms. Harrelson?
Well, thank you for recognizing this great educator. As you know, that kids who struggle with reading, the older they get, the more difficult it becomes just to engage them. And, um, Miss putting the right tools and the right hands is just, um, the most important thing. And with System 44 and Ms. Harrelson, that's been a great match. And I just want to commend her. She gets to go, uh, this summer. And she'll be going to, uh, Dr. Bill Daggett's Model School Conference, uh, for Scholastic. And, um, she gets to go down and, uh, attend that conference and be part of that. So, um, we are so proud of her and so proud of her efforts and the results that she's getting. So, Ms. Harrelson, thank you.
You sure you don't want to stay and be grilled for a few questions or anything? No? Well, congratulations. That's outstanding.
Ms. Garrett? There she is. Ford, we're on item E on the agenda, page two. Ms. Kim Garrett, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning in Secondary Schools.
It is my honor and privilege to bring both of our high school principals, Mr. Jinks and Dr. Brackett, forward. Uh, we have lots of great things to celebrate with our high schools tonight. We are going to begin, and if students from both high schools will join us, um, regarding the Arkansas Governor's Scholar, Scholastic Honors Day.
It's an honor and privilege, um, to, uh, recognize tonight. One student is not here. Ryan Thompson will be representing Harbor High School. But one student is, that is here, is Fei Zhong. And, uh, Fei will be representing Harbor High School also for the Annual Scholastic Honors Day at the Governor's Mansion in, uh, O'May. We've already done that, actually. I'm sorry.
Springdale High School had, had two candidates as well. Both of them attended the Annual Scholarship Honors Day at the Capitol. Christina Perez Espinoza.
Christina?
And Yasmin Chavez, I think you met previously.
Our arrival times were, I was nine AM and she was nine fifteen AM. So we had to leave here like at four AM to get all the way over there. Um, we arrived and we waited in line outside the mansion. We went in and you got to tour the mansion. And then you ended up in this beautiful barroom that has like chandeliers and, um, a lot of pretty things in it. And, um, the governor was at the bottom of the stairs and you stand in line and take a picture with him and then tour his gardens and his mansion.
How many students total would have been at this event? Do you know, or?
I think it's two from every high school in the state.
Okay, alright. And how were you selected? How were these?
First and second in class.
You sure you don't want to say anything? Okay, alright. Well, congratulations.
Next, we have our journalism students. Um, if you guys will, please join me here, um, who won awards at the state level competition.
The Arkansas School Public, excuse me, Press Association, ASPA, Arkansas School Press Association, yearly gives out awards for excellence in, uh, student journalism. And they range anywhere from story, uh, writing to editing and photography. So from Springdale High School, I'll tell you what, when I call your name, just stand over there. I haven't called your name yet, Zach. For sports column, Zach Burton, honorable mention. For feature photo, Aiber Gonzalez. Uh, for editorial cartoon, Storm Crenshaw. For multicultural feature, Aiber, uh, Aiber Gonzalez, honorable mention. For, uh, center spread design staff, the staff won this, center spread design, they got a superior. Zach got a superior award for news story. Uh, editorial writing, Cash Randall, got an honorable mention. For personality profile, Becca Cole. Got a superior. Uh, for sports feature, Channing Baldwin, received an honorable mention. And for front page design, Heber Gonzalez got a superior rating.
We were just arguing about whether or not we're gonna announce all forty-eight awards, but we're not. We're just gonna introduce those students that are here that, uh, and I want to introduce you to Ms. Carla Sprague, who is our journalism instructor. She does newspaper and, uh, our yearbook. And so I want her to talk just a moment about the program and, and, and I won't let her announce all of them.
Yeah, there are too many. Uh, we are really proud of what we've done at Harbor. Uh, I have Anna and Katie, my yearbook editors this year. They're both juniors and they're coming back next year. Katie's also my niece, so I have coerced her, bribed her, whatever I need to do to get her to come back. And Reagan is the editor of the Harbor Herald, the newspaper. What we have, we'll just give you copies of the paper. Uh, Dr. Brackett supports what we do. And we are so grateful for his willingness, uh, to let us try new things. This year, we did, for the first time ever in my sixteen-year career, we did a satire newspaper. And that kind of went in conjunction with the satire unit that was being studied in our English classes. And so, no, Dr. Brackett is not running for mayor. Uh, we're not trying to get rid of him. Uh, I can't tell you how many students really believe that prom had been canceled and that Onyx Coffee Shop was no longer going to serve them. You would have thought, just, you know, Christmas was canceled. So that's a copy of our satire paper. I hope you enjoy that. We also have a copy of our 2014 Wildcat, if you'll give it. There's a half sheet inside the cover that, uh, will give you directions on how to use our augmented reality, uh, technology. Uh, you can download an app that's free and scan the cover of the yearbook and a video of the seniors singing the alma mater in the rotunda. A week ago, was it? A week ago last Friday was their last day of school, of them singing the alma mater in the rotunda. Also, in the back of the book, there are photos in the index that you can do that as well and watch track meets. Our, uh, our cheerleaders perform at competition and, and other cool videos in the back. But I'm very proud of what they do. It's not about the awards. Uh, it's about what we learn, make mistakes, learn from those. And I appreciate what Dr. Brackett allows us to do in supporting, uh, student journalism.
Good. This looks like this was a lot of fun, to be able to do that, so. So what's better, doing the real news or doing the satire? What's better, doing the real news or the satire newspaper?
Um, honestly, the satire, but it took a little convincing, but.
Yeah.
Are you happy with it? I was happy with it.
It looks like fun. So Zach, did you win best dressed at this competition? You're looking really nice. I want some hints on what to wear to make me look tall and thin. Well, it, it's, it's been interesting. We, there's a lot more information in our packet about what your students have done. And it, great accomplishment. And it's fun to be able to get engaged in, in things that are, you know, outside of just always, "We need to do algebra and we need to do reading, Dr. Rollins." I know that. But these types of things are wonderful for engagement too. So glad you got to do it and glad you had success. Congratulations. See, she told me I could keep it. No, oh, she's not saying that.
We'll just be asking for more technology.
I got you. I got you.
Next, we would like to recognize our FFA students.
It's my honor, uh, to introduce you to Ms. Patty Priest. Mr. Jim Hall, I don't believe is able to attend tonight. Uh, and they will, uh, present, she will present some information from the students. And then the students will present their work.
What an awesome spring semester we've had. We have spent many Saturdays and late, late evenings , uh, traveling to, uh, various contests on any given Saturday. We might have up to forty students with us leaving early in the morning and returning late at night while, um, just having fun, but also competing. And I, I just want to brag on a few of our teams. Uh, these are our state winning teams. We've had, for the first time in the history of Harbor, all of our teams that competed at district actually qualified for state contests, but unfortunately, not all of them won. These students here will be representing Arkansas at the Nationals, um, in October. So this, this, I've taught fourteen years and I've had one team occasionally go to Nationals. But to have this many students competing at national convention, the next time you see me, you will have more gray, see more gray hair. Because they will all need to be in the same place across Louisville, Kentucky in different times. So we still have to work out the logistics of that, but I am so proud of them. And the majority of these students are sophomores and, and juniors, so they're not leaving me for a while. But our, our horse judging team is a group of four girls. And every contest we attended this year, they, they won, except for one. And Melbourne beat them. But they still won state and they're competing at Nationals. And they have been, we're going several places this summer. We're going to Oklahoma City for some national competitions. But the, the real big national competition will be in October. Our Meats judging team, they, they beat all of the teams in the state by three hundred points. I mean, there was no one that could be close to them. So I was very proud of them as well. And then we also had Ag Science Fair. We had a, two, a team of two students who, uh, did some research over the summer and put together a, a science fair project and presented that at state contests. And they won and they will be competing at Nationals as well, as well. And, um, for the first time, we had two students compete in what's called the World Food Prize. And they, um, spent a day at Tyson, headquarters here in Springdale, with people from around the state. And, um, a guy from, Marissa and Kayla can tell you more about it. I, I did not get to attend. But I think he was from Iowa. And they were, we'll find out in June if they will be selected to attend the National World Food Prize. And they had to write a paper. They spent their spring break writing this long paper, doing research about a country and a, a problem they have with food. And if they're selected as the national winners, they will get to do a semester internship in a country helping solve the, the problem of hunger. So we're, we're super excited about them. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves real quick and what team they were on.
Um, hello, I'm Cheyenne Fogg. I was on the horse judging team and this is our first place district plaque.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Schaefer and I was also on the horse judging team. And this is our Colts Classic and Arkansas Alumni plaque.
I'm Danielle Moore and I was on the horse judging team as well. And this was our Cream of the Crop Classic First Place plaque.
I'm Ashley Mueller and I was on the Ag Science Team and on the horse judging team. And this is our State Championship plaque.
I'm Sarah Glenn and I was on the Ag Science Fair Team. And this is our plaque that we will receive at our banquet.
I'm Jacob Edgerson and I was on the Meats judging team. And this is our cutting board we got.
Um, I'm Kayla Smith. I was on the Meats Team. This is our state, oh, state plaque. We won a, uh, state convention, so. Oh, I was high individual. I beat a hundred and three other people. I don't eat meat.
I'm Marissa Davis and I was on the Meats Team. I also participated in the World Food Science Pr- Prize. And, uh, this is our Cream of the Crop plaque for first place.
I wasn't gonna mention that the high individual in the state on the Meats judging team was a vegetarian, but hey, I can recruit them, so. And then I failed to mention, and I'm sorry, but Sarah White is a senior this year. She'll be graduating. And she has the honor of receiving a national FFA scholarship. And Mr. Brackett can tell you, that is kind of a challenge to get. It's not something we get every year. And we were super excited to open the email that said she will be getting a thousand dollars. And our sponsor for that happened to be Tyson Foods, so that was very close to our hearts. But this is Sarah White.
Congratulations. Very proud of those folks. We're always glad when we can show up to an event. And obviously, we always all want to win, but I'm very proud to see Harbor winning many of those events as well. I brought a small group tonight. Most of our kids, uh, working, had other activities going on tonight, but thank you for having me. We've had a very busy spring and I'm gonna let them visit with you a little bit, but I want to highlight a few cool things. Last time I visited with you, I told you we were gonna be published in Ag Ed Magazine and that just came out. And from that, we've got a lot of additional notoriety. And, uh, we had a chance to experience that just yesterday. We had the dean of the School of Agriculture and the director of Extension Education in Trinidad. And, uh, he actually come and toured our food science facilities yesterday and they're gonna replicate that program. They're gonna come back again, tour it again, but they're wanting to replicate that in Trinidad. So I just wanted to, you know, give an update on that. That's quite an honor, in my opinion, that a university would come and want to replicate a high school program. And it was based off of, uh, his readings in Ag Ed Magazine, so very proud of that. In addition, uh, based off of that article, we're gonna be featured and, uh, we're having a, a, a professional photographer come in and a communications director for the Arkansas Department of Education. They're gonna feature our food science lab on the State CTE website. So, uh, you know, we're getting some additional notoriety there. I'm very proud of that for Springdale to be recognized as being a leader in the area of food science. And, uh, lastly, based off of, what of our, we, we ask our students a lot about what drives them as far as instruction goes. And we try to be on the forefront of providing instruction. And we implemented after a visit with Mr. Jinks and some of the other innovative educators in our, uh, school district. We tried to implement, uh, self-paced, uh, skill-based mastery learning. And, uh, we've implemented a lot of that in our coursework where students actually control what they learn. And they're gonna share a little bit about that a little bit later on. But Mr. Ross and I have been invited, uh, this fall to the Arkansas Curriculum Council to provide, uh, a little bit of insight on how that's worked in our classrooms. So we're proud to share some of our student experiences. I have three here today, uh, state winner, Ag Science Fair, Food Science Technology. Uh, and he's becoming a, uh, well-versed expert in rice starch. Hunter Sergeant Samuel Satterfield, Samuel's unable to make it tonight, but he'll be pursuing a degree in food science at the University of Arkansas in food science and technology, particularly research and development. And Hunter, they won first place in the state Ag Science Fair. They also participated in the regular science fair and, uh, did very well there. I have Cameron and is gonna, uh, talk to you just a little bit, and Taylor Webb. So I'll let, turn it over to these guys, let them share just a little bit. But be sure to ask, uh, Hunter a little bit about rice. Food science gave him a new outlook on high school, for sure.
Uh, our teachers asked us to come up with a rice-based product that we can make like a snack bar out of. And with time went on, we found out that rice was harder to deal with. So we, uh, we started messing around with it and we found out that there's a lot of starch in rice. Pretty much seventy-five percent of rice is starch. And we started playing with it and we got to where we started to want to make our price, or our rice, a, uh, an ice cream product. And we talked to the food specialists at the University of Arkansas. And they let us know that there's like only one way to get the starch out of rice, and that's with an acid. And then the FDA doesn't approve it as a rice product anymore. It's just a grain. So that's, it, it was a rough track, but we're still working on it.
What he's not sharing with you is he started this project in food science one last year. It's been an ongoing research project. Uh, they work with both rice and, and the rice research specialists at the University of Arkansas. And he's really not giving you a full snapshot of the amount of effort that he's put in. He's, uh, used physical means, chemical means. And the wall they keep running up against is there's no way to alter, uh, rice in order for it to be approved as a rice product without doing a chemical through acid washing. So they're still working on that, but, uh, it's, it's pretty interesting if you look at the chemistry. And, you know, he had no interest in food science really when he came in. And now, he's talking to, you know, PhD fellows, you know, and scientists that work with this on a daily basis. And he can talk intelligently about this.
Let us know when you figure out how to make a Twinkie with rice. That would be, that'd be an accomplishment.
While I also was challenged with the rice bar.
Well, I also was challenged with the rice bar project. And throughout that process, I figured out a lot of things don't work with rice. But I ended up with a, the beginning of a rice plastic product that's, will be food-grade and edible, that I'm gonna continue out into next year. And hopefully, I'm gonna go to the Ag Science Fair and hopefully win like they did. And I also compete in Ag Communications and that has brought me very far in my speaking career, because I don't think I would be able to say a word up here if I hadn't done that, along with parliamentary procedures.
One quick thing I just want to touch on also is she didn't fully explain, in her, in her research, she started off on rice bar, went into rice potato chips, and then she made this stuff. She came in one day and she's like, this is like plastic. So now she's trying to develop a biodegradable edible packaging made out of a rice-based product. And she figured out some of the ingredients behind it. It's pretty cool. We'll come demonstrate some of that sometime or you guys come see us. You know, very proud of her and some of the other achievements.
There might be some money in that product.
Well, you know, the reason we keep coming back to rice is because it's readily available and be grown in most countries and.
A lot in Arkansas.
Really cheap. Arkansas is the number one rice producer. Plus, we're trying to grab the attention of rice. You know, we do a lot of meat stuff.
Sure.
Don't discount, we work with Tyson's, George's, Simmons', or the Pet Food, O'Kay Foods. We work with all these wonderful folks in Northwest Arkansas. And so we're trying to get rice's attention also, because we have a division at the University of Arkansas that's underutilized, so it's our goal, get more kids involved in areas other than meat, you know, as far as receiving scholarships and things of that nature. But we work on a lot of meat products too. It's kind of cool. Appreciate you guys.
Is, can a vegetarian eat rice? Hey, I love rice. That's my favorite dish.
Well, that is, that's great. Congratulations to each of you for your accomplishments. And again, like I said before, go ahead. Yes, well, let's do that. Parents, please stand up and wave at us and all that. We talk a lot about student engagement, so thank you for being engaged and involved in your schools. And I mean, this really sounds interesting. So good luck as, as you go forward with that and good luck with everything that, that you students are doing. Good. And thank you to the teachers, so, Ms. Priest.
Next, we have our students who have recently won medals at the state level of the Skills USA competition.
Okay, we've got Health Occupation Service of America. And I believe we had a Medical Academy Senior Bank, but do I have any of those students that are here? I think we had a few of them that were. How about we have Izzy Garcia, Carlos Montoya, Tyler Morio, or Adam Tomlinson. Did you bring me flowers? Okay. Chris Nation, Mario Rizendez, and Ruth Sandoval won first place in public service announcement. And Izzy and Carlos and Tyler and Adam won first place in creative problem solving. Are any of you those kids? Okay, what's your name? Good, all right. And you got medals there? Excellent. So congratulations to you guys and well done. Your parents here? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Let's stay where you're at. FCC LA, which is the competitive division of Family Consumer Science, excuse me about that. Jesse May is a state star events winner, silver medal. And Michaela Smith, state star events winner for silver medal. Either one, they're not here, they have a childcare banquet tonight. Nathan Keeling got second place in culinary arts in baking. Engineering, we had Dora Villarreal, Stephanie Sandoval, and Arias Verde. Dora got community service, first place. Stephanie got community service, first place. And Arias got first place community service. So congratulations, ladies. Our law group got first place in crime scene investigation. Caleb Bowen, Anna Baroso, and Shelby Hull. And from what I understand, they got a perfect score, score on that. That's the first time it's ever happened in Skills USA. And in business, Wendy Diaz got a first place in spreadsheet. Paulina Tamaio, first place in accounting two. And then Chris Lawson, third place in database. Good? And? I knew we had a couple of red jackets up there. I want to introduce to you Robert Nakasone, Jalissa Calderon, and Tia Trion. Tia couldn't be here tonight because of a scheduling conflict, but four Springdale High School students from the Video Broadcast Program of Study ran for various Arkansas Skills USA state officer positions at the state conference and championship in April. And there are, there are three different levels for that. All officers had to complete before their names were allowed on the ballot, make it ninety percent or higher on the Skills USA knowledge test, submit a completed student workbook from the Skills USA Professional Development Program with an essay and letters of recommendation, and then had to be interviewed by a panel over various aspects, including the Skills USA pledge and an officer part. And after completing all this, out of the four candidates from Springdale High School, three were voted into office. And now Springdale High School holds three of the seven officer positions for the state. These officers will go to training in Little Rock and attend the Skills USA National Conference, Championship in Kansas City, Missouri. And at the fall, the officers will go to Washington DC to discuss the importance of Perkins money. They will not only represent our state, but our school system as well. So we want to congratulate you too. And are your parents here as well? Okay? But they get to wear these cool red jackets and, and it's fitting for our school and we're very proud of them. And congratulations to you guys. Good job.
Mr. Jinks, real quick, would you allow each of them to take the microphone? Give us your name one more time. I was looking down as you were saying names, so introduce yourselves real quick.
My name is Robert Nakasone.
Jalissa Calderon.
Stephanie Sandoval.
Arias Verde.
Dora Villarreal.
Adam Thompson.
Isma Garcia.
Okay, well, thank you. I was looking down as you were talking, didn't get to see all that. Well, congratulations.
Caleb Bowen.
Anna Baroso.
Good. Well, congratulations to each of you for some great achievement. Good job.
We continue to be learners in Skills USA. And I've never attended there, but Trent Jones is not in the, in this arena, but he's downstairs working. And he has done a video of Skills USA, some of the work that's going on there. And I'm looking forward to attending, because it is amazing of what Springdale students across the board in high school are doing at Skills USA. It's my privilege to introduce you to affectionately known as the Three Amigos. Mr. Stowe Hoffius, Mr. Chuck Mackey, work in our Construction Technology Program. And Mr. John Gore, who is in our CAD drafting program. And I'm gonna give them just a moment to talk about some awards that their students won, and the students can also talk about that.
My name is John Gore and I want to introduce two students to you. The first one is Christian Messina. Now, Christian won second place in architectural drafting in the state level. He's wearing his competition uniform. He is planning on attending U of A in architecture. And this is Julio Hernandez. Now Julio won first place in the state, state championship, gold medal in technical drafting. Now Julio's wearing the T-shirt he won. However, he did win a little bit more than his T-shirt. He got a tuition voucher for either two or four years at up to fifteen different schools in Arkansas. These, these students do excellent work. And I just wanted to give you a quick example. Not a lot, but let me show you this real quick. Julio, why don't you hold that up? That is the drawing. Julio did that in five hours at Skills. This is a model that we printed out on our 3D printer of that part that he drew. And needless to say, judges were very impressed by his work. This is not, this is a project he just did at school. We did that on our 3D printer. We printed each part. He drew each part in 3D CAD. Here's a drawing of what he did. Here's a drawing of what he did. So I just thought I'd give you some examples of some of the things they're doing in our CAD department.
I have heard about 3D printing and I could never picture it. Is, is you print that and then the printer sucks plastic into a mold?
Yeah, see, it uses a PLS plastic and it's actually a liquid 3D printer. So it's like a liquid inkjet, except it uses plastic and it does it in three dimensions instead of two.
So there's no molding ball, but just?
No mold. No mold. It's absolutely, it's liquid plastic.
That's so cool. And we have those in our schools?
Yes, we do. Several. Springdale has one, we have one. I know some of the junior highs have them as well. Now, Christian, I wanted to show an example of Christian's work. This, this is a, what he drew. He drew this in five hours. It's got a cover sheet, floor plan, elevations, and details. The judges were extremely impressed. In fact, Christian would have won gold, except he made a spelling error. And it's not really his fault. His program crashed right in the middle of his competition. He had to redo a bunch of it and he was just in a huge hurry. But I wanted to show you an example of his work. This is also a model that he did. This is a project he's working on. Now, he did a complete set of architectural plans for this, but this is a model he made as well, in class. We were in the process of printing a 3D model on our 3D printer, but we ran out of time. Or I would have brought a 3D, a smaller version of a 3D model as well.
Are they both graduating this year? I didn't.
No, Julio is graduating, but, I'm sorry. Just backwards. Christian is graduating, going to the U of A, but I have another year with Julio, so I have big plans for him.
You need to bring him back for us next.
Hi, my name, my name is Julio Hernandez and like my teacher said, I won first place in technical drafting at state. Well, I wasn't really expecting to win first place, because it was my first time actually going. And like, Christian here, he went, it was his second time and both times, he's, he's gotten silver, which is second place at state. So like, I was surprised when I got first place in state. Well, I won by one point.
You will get a shot at the tuition vouchers next year.
No, he's finished.
Oh, he's finished? He's not?
He has another shot, but he's already won one. He's already got a tuition voucher. It's good.
Okay, that is amazing.
Well, my name's Chuck Mackey. I think some of you know that this is my first year here in Springdale. And I want to tell you all that I really appreciate the interest in the career in technical education that you all have expressed. Some of you have come to the shop and I know Dr. Rollins is a big proponent and Dr. Cleveland. And I very much appreciate it. It helps me as an instructor. We had a young team this year, but they really worked real hard and we ended up with a silver medal and the technical math. And for those who don't know, the technical math is a very difficult competition, highly competitive. And Aaron is a sophomore, so we get two more shots to win the gold. And then Nicholas Huck won bronze medal in the electrical wiring. That's a very difficult contest. It's, it's judged by actual journeymen, master electricians, city electrical inspectors. And a lot of the kids that I've worked with in the past that have done wellness competition, they either go on to the apprenticeship school, which in the electrical business is a very well-paying job, or a lot of them go on into engineering. And so anyway, we, we had a very good first run this year and I think we're gonna do, do good all the time. I'm gonna let them just say their name and, and then I'll step out of the way here.
I'm Aaron Howardson and honestly, if it hadn't been for Mr. Mackey, I wouldn't have been here today. I didn't think I would do well. I wasn't even thinking about going. But Mr. Mackey said, well, why don't you give it a shot? And I did. And I didn't think I was gonna win, but you never know, so you just have to try. And we had a lot of other teammates. We weren't the only ones there. And there were a lot of other medals as well. And I just want to say, good job to all of our teammates that were out there.
My name's Nicholas Huck. Kind of the same story. This is my first year. Last year, I competed in a different, different division, opening and closing. And this is my first year for electrical. So I didn't really think I'd place or anything. So called my name for third place and I was pretty surprised, so.
All my, all my team is working. So Nick was on our opening and closing team last year. That comprises of seven individuals. President, secretary, it's an opening and closing ceremony for Skills USA. This year, we, they all won silver. So we haven't quite figured out how to get up to that goal, but we're getting closer. So those seven students had to work, it's, it's the only event where it's a complete team effort. So they have to attend all the practice sessions, they have to work together, because the medal and the judging all hinges upon how they perform as a team. So just very proud of them. And what these guys didn't tell you, you're competing against students across the whole state of Arkansas. There's probably four thousand students in this event. In electrical alone, there's probably sixty or seventy-five contestants. In the opening and closing team, there's probably forty. So when you can place second or third, any of those, in those events, you're competing against all the schools in the state. So it's really an accomplishment on their part. Very proud of these students. I don't think, any parents, folks? You do have some? I'm sorry, Ms. Howardson.
Well, keep up the good work. We've been able to be out there for a recent meeting and it was sure interesting to see everything that you do and the equipment. It's fascinating, so keep on learning, guys.
And our host of competition this year, I would like to introduce to you one of our medical science teachers, Ms. Debbie Davis. The only student that I'll recognize as one that was unable to attend is Emily Kate Davis, was state runner-up in medical pathology. I'll let Ms. Davis introduce her students.
Hello, I'm Debbie Davis, one of the medical professions instructors at Harbor. And I'm actually going to have them tell you their accomplishments. I will say about Madison. Madison has been a member of HOSA for three years. She has literally been my brain. I'm gonna miss her dearly. She graduates Saturday. And Joshua has also been a member. He's a junior this year, but he's been a member for the last two years. And he's placed at state the last two years, competed as a sophomore and won first, actually.
I'm Madison. I, I'm the president of this chapter. I competed in dental terminology and placed second.
I'm Joshua Edens. I am the vice president of this chapter. The past two years, I've competed for the extemporaneous health poster and I won gold both times and it's been a lot of fun.
What exactly does that mean? Extemporaneous health post? What are you doing?
You go into a room, you have three hours to complete the entire thing. They give you a poster, you need to bring your own art supplies, all those things. As soon as you get in there, they reveal the topic. It's, you learn, once you get there, it's spontaneous, you don't know before then. And then it's just a random chapter, or not chapter, excuse me. It's a random like topic or whatever over. Yeah, it's health-related. My first year was over bullying and this last year, it was over pharmaceutical expiration dates and those things and.
And that's a topic you've learned about?
Sometimes yes, sometimes no. On both of them.
You have the opportunity to research?
You don't know until you get in there. So any prior knowledge is obviously beneficial, but they also do give you a small tidbit of information that you can go off of as well. But most of it is, you need to know the stuff, so.
There's a time for that?
Yes, there's a three-hour time limit for it.
Well, congratulations. Way to go.
Well, congratulations, way to go.
As the Harbor Wildcat cheerleaders join me at the stage, I want to give a brief overview of where they have been in our, in their, in our program. If you have not recognized, this is our ninth year at Harbor High School. And of those nine years, six of those years, our cheer program has either won the state or been state runner-up. And so I blame Ann Markfeld for that, who's currently assistant principal at Central Junior High School. Ms. Jamie Bunting joined us this year and took over a program that the expectations are very high and they were four tenths a point away from being state champions. And so at this time, I want Ms. Bunting to speak just a moment about their work and then I'll let each student introduce themselves. And I want you to know that I'm very, very proud of the Wildcat cheer program and the work that these young ladies do, because they're either there at 6:30 in the morning and they're staying really late, they're a great support program, they're also extreme strong athletes and competitors. And so we are very proud of their work and hopefully we can gain that fourth point, four tenths of a point next year. So Ms. Jamie Bunting, if you would come now.
I was just really excited to get to come to Harbor this year because of the history of the Harbor cheer program. I mean, I was from a small school where we would sit there and watch the Harbor girls and be like, "Oh, wow." I mean, my girls could barely do backhand springs and then there were the Harbor cheerleaders. So I had high expectations of the girls coming in and they work so hard. I mean, and they're giving, they're good kids. I can't brag on these girls enough. Some of them couldn't be here tonight. But one thing to note is they also, they were state runner-up, but they also won a philanthropy award this year for giving like $1,300 to Children's Hospital, which was all in donations. And so they do a lot of things outside of just cheering on the sideline or at competition. So just really proud of them, they're, they're great kids, so.
Well, take that microphone off there and let's pass it down and get everybody's name and.
I'm going to start with this side. This is my seniors that could come tonight, so we're going to start with our seniors.
I'm Ashley Alston.
Madison Kennedy.
Chrissy Tuck.
Marissa Gibson.
Chandler McCray.
Lane Nguyen.
Alex Franco.
Emma Kreitz.
Sarah Taylor.
Melissa Marbury.
Jordan Meyer.
Molly Ombi.
August Jenkins.
Olivia Allen.
Well, congratulations and way to go. Good job.
If you would, also recognize our parents. Because of the dedication of our parents, this program is able to be as successful as it is. So parents, if you would stand.
We appreciate you staying so long. I know that you had to wait for a little while, but we appreciate it and good luck at graduation and, and all that good stuff, so thank you, Ms. Bunting, good job.
Thank you for coming in.
Good job. Go Wildcats.
We are very proud of some of our junior high students tonight who are very high achievers at the VEX robotics competition. And so we're going to start with Southwest Junior High's team. Mr. Wagner, if you will come down with the Southwest Junior High team and introduce your team, please.
It's been an exciting year for our VEX robotics team. We have not had that in the past. And Mr. Newberry, the teacher, has taken this on and these kids have really done an outstanding job. We had two teams that competed, but I don't want to steal their thunder. They're going to introduce themselves and their coach.
Would like to say, this is the second year in Arkansas that they have done the VEX robotics team. Last year, our ninth graders were first place in the state and we look forward to even more accomplishment as, as we get more experience. And I just want to say that, that not only do the kids enjoy this, but I am enjoying it a whole lot. It's become one of my passions, it's one of the few things I'd come to school early and stay late for. And on that note, I would like for the parents of these students to stand up, because since these guys don't drive yet, they've got to come pick them up early and stay late.
All right, well, I'd like to just thank you all for letting us come out and have this presentation and that we appreciate everything that y'all have done for us, including funding, things like that. But I'd just like to say, this is the north, this is the Arkansas State VEX Champions, we're the, the Excellence Award winners, which is one of our awards that we have up there, and we are Team 7998B, Real Steel. I'm Ken Johnson and I'm going to be attending Harbor High School next year and I plan on having a career in electrical engineering. I sing bass in the choir and was selected for the Southwest, the 2014 Southwest Arkansas Choral Directors Association Choir. And my roles on the team are coach, designer, builder, and scout.
I am Noah Nguyen. I will attend Harbor High School next year and will consider a career in computer engineering. I play the alto and soprano saxophone in the band and I'm a member of the National Junior Honor Society. My roles on the team are programmer, designer, builder, and driver.
I am Reese Williams. I will attend Springdale High School next year and will consider a career in aerospace engineering. I sing tenor in the choir and I'm a member of the National Junior Honor Society. My roles on the team are designer, builder, and driver.
I am Juan Zuniga and I will attend Harbor High School next year. I will consider a career in mechanical engineering or music. I am a part of the Southwest Junior High Student Council and National Junior Honor Society. I sing bass for the choir and I play trumpet for the band. My roles on the team are designer, builder, and scout.
Well, just to start off, Southwest, we have, we have the VEX robotics design system. It is implemented in our engineering and technology two course. It provides a platform for students to learn about areas that are rich with career, career opportunities spanning science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM for short. Other than science and engineering principles, VEX robotics projects encourage teamwork, leadership, and problem-solving among groups.
Every year, there is a new competition that VEX robotics state. Then each team then has to go ahead and create a new robot to go ahead and complete these tasks. The design process is put into practice by the teams identifying the problem, re- identifying the problem, researching the problem, creating a prototype, and then testing the solution. The competition includes an autonomous, computer-controlled program and then also a driver-controlled against two other teams. Our drivers, Noah and Reese, will demonstrate picking up the buckyballs and scoring them to two for five points each.
Last March, Team 7998B, we went to the competition, the Arkansas State Competition. We placed first in the qualifiers and second in finals and we were awarded the highest award presented at a VEX robotics competition, the Excellence Award. This award qualified us to go to the Anaheim World Championship.
Our team competed in the Northwest Arkansas Challenge, April 19th in Fayetteville. We received the designer award by the judges and our teacher, Ms. Newberry, received the educator award. We represented Springdale and the state of Arkansas at the VEX Robotics World Competition, April 23rd in Anaheim, California. Our team, our team of eight students was one of 700 qualified to compete out of 10,000 registered for the 2013-2014 competition season.
There were 433 teams registered from around the world for this year's 2014 VEX World Competition. Countries represented this year include, it's my favorite part by the way, China, Japan, New Zealand, Kazakhstan, Puerto Rico, Malaysia, Taiwan, Colombia, United, United Kingdom, Dominican Republic, um, you really worked this out better than I. Puerto Rico, Mexico, Spain, Ireland, France, I mean, I said that one, Saudi Arabia, Egypt, France, I'm sorry, it was a lot better earlier. Saudi Arabia, Guatemala, South Korea, and the United States. I think I forgot one.
I liked the way you said France. It's definitely Arkansas.
Although we didn't qua- we didn't make it to the finals, we did do, we did get the chance to do multiple things while we were there and I thought one of the things we got to do was go to Disneyland and that was probably one of the best things ever.
Early robotics in Disneyland. That's one of the very first things.
As the nine-second control driver period in the match approaches, drivers have a last
opportunity to score big points. Watch our drivers, Noah and Reese, load a big ball and hang from the bar for 20 points. We want to thank our sponsors for making our trip to the 2014 World Competition possible. Springdale School District, John Tyson, Tyson's Food, Walton Foundation.
The Vasquez and Johnson families.
Southwest Junior High Student Council and their, and the National Junior Honor Society. Southwest Junior High's drama and speech teacher, Ron Spalter, and Southwest Junior High's principals, Bryce Wagner, Kim Chavez, and Jacob Hayward.
Five of the eight students on our team will go to Harbor High School next year and we will, can't wait to see our, the team next year.
We thank you for your time and we accept any questions you might have.
Well, it sounds like based on your background, you could probably sing a quartet after this show, so you may just add that to the repertoire.
I figured you were a front man for a band.
Well, what a neat experience. So you were at Anaheim for how long? Three?
Four days.
Four days?
Four, five days.
I'm sure it was packed full of activities.
Yeah, there was plenty. Seven hundred jeans got to go and there's 10,000 others that were fully registered to try and make it there, so plenty of people we had to go with. It was terrific.
Some of our team members, it was the first time they'd ever been on an airplane, first time they'd seen the ocean, stayed in a hotel, so it was just an amazing time and all, all eight of them, I'd taken anywhere in the world, they were just excellent, they represented this way.
And it wasn't all fun, it was basically a 12-hour day every day. They got up at 6:00 and they didn't get done till almost 6:00 PM, so it was a wonderful experience and they, they performed professionally, represented the district with pride and Southwest.
One other thing that I think one of you said was that your instructor was recognized. Tell us again what that was?
The educators, I don't know what the qualifications were.
They're really good at getting us where we are.
Well, that's, congratulations. I mean, I'm sure that. Excellent job, guys. Way to go. Congratulations.
Parents.
Yeah, I think we see a few with Cam. Let's get your standard. Good job, guys.
Great job. Very good. Principal, so we, Kim stayed pretty close. Do you have another introduction on yours?
We have two more students and with VEX robotics. Do you want me to go ahead with those?
Yes, please.
Okay, Lakeside Junior High, Ms. Emily Cook. She's going to come forward and talk about the regional competition and, and how her students did there.
All right, so I'm really, really glad that Richard went first with his Southwest team because I would have only been able to explain the games with a bunch of hand waving and motion, so I'm really glad I don't have to explain that game all over again. So now that we all know what it is, I would like for my students to go ahead and introduce themselves really quick so that we can all know the Lakeside Junior High Robotics Team.
My name is David Whalen.
My name is Tony Kopeck.
My name is Juan Sparza.
My name is Yurita Chavez.
My name is Ethan Phipps.
All right, so these students at the regional competition, we went to Ramey Junior High and we competed in the VEX robotics competition, also another one in Little, in Russellville as well. And we came away and we won the sportsmanship award. And this is a very special award because it really says a lot about our, our kids in Springdale, because one of the stories that happened was, we came up to, to one of the competitions and one here, he was, he's our lead driver, and they mentioned, you know, who is, who's the Lakeside kid? Where's Lakeside? We're a first-year school, nobody really knows who Lakeside is. And so we, we, other teachers came up to me and they said, "Who, who are your students? Where are you from?" And, and one was the lead driver and they, they didn't do very well their first round. And, and so one reached over to the, the team on the other side and they said, "It's okay, man. You'll get it next time, it's just the first round." And so this was the attitude that my students had throughout the entire competition. And then they, my students would not let another team run back to their pit if they forgot anything. They had to give them, if they needed safety glasses, they'd hand them the safety glasses. If they forgot something, they would, they would make sure that the other teams had it. And so, long story short, I ended up missing a whole lot of my own safety glasses, so we're going to have to get those brought back. But really, their hearts were there and they, they really showed what Springdale's about as far as the sportsmanship goes and caring for other people. So I just want to thank you all for having us and thank you, Mr. Rollins. So, thank you.
What about parents of your students?
Yeah, so we have several parents here, probably the ones that are still in here are our parents. If you guys would go ahead and stand, I just want to thank you all for, you know, having your students come over and taking them home, bringing them back. It'll be really good when they can all drive, so, thank you.
Good job. Good job, so don't forget the hardware. Good job. Good job, guys. Holy cow, that's my other robotic material there.
Cool.
That is cool. Good job.
From George Junior High, Dane Howard and Mr. Earl Rowe. And I'm going to let Mr. Rowe talk about this special award that Dane was given.
Well, Dane was a part of a team, is this him and another young man that went to the state competition this year? And we came in 10th, which was out of 38 teams, which is, which was really good for us. We're not quite up with Southwest over here, but, but for us, and it, and it really allowed us, we had not learned about the alliance system where you get to pick the people that are part of your team in, in the preliminaries. So we were, that allowed us to choose the two Springdale High School teams to work with us. You know, we placed high enough that we were able to pick them. Anyhow, Dane and his partner did really well and they tore their robot apart the next day and then the young man that was his partner left the district. So there's Dane there all by himself and another young man wanted to be his partner, so he worked hard with him for the next couple of weeks and we went to the regional competition. And Dane's partner didn't show up that day. So Dane is working and then his robot refused to work, which is not uncommon at competitions that things don't happen, but Dane just refused to quit. You know what I'm saying? Where he just, and the judges were coming around and they were talking to the different teams, finding out what was going on and they said, "This is one incredible young man. He just refuses to quit." So a little bit later in the competition, he, he did well in the competition. He didn't win or anything, but he, he showed well and they recognized his efforts by giving him the judges' award in this competition. So if you want to know what represents judges. His parents are here and his brother was stand, stand-in supervisor or advisor that day. He is a student teacher, just graduates in the U of A in my field, would love to have a job at Springdale while I'm here. And he graduated last Saturday, but anyhow, I just wanted to recognize them two for their efforts in this.
We may have to chase him with that microphone, but. We may have to chase him with that microphone, but, well, that's, that's, that is terrific. I think if there were, there's employers in the room that are always looking for somebody that won't quit. And I don't, I don't know many employers that would expect you to be perfect, but just to keep working with others, that's, that's all about dealing with adversity, whether it's school or whether it's work or parenting or whatever it may be. So, good job. Congratulations.
Cynthia, I'm gonna invite you to come on down if you would. And I know you've got some special teachers and principals. If y'all be getting your thoughts together on graduation, we'll come back to that. Ms. Cynthia Voss.
We won't take it for a second, but before I say anything, I just cannot even thank you all. The attention and patience and just, I love watching you all as everybody's been presented. It's as if, I, I love watching my parents watch their kids perform. And that's kind of what I've been seeing tonight. But I just can't tell you how, how blessed I am to just sit here and watch this tonight. So thank you all so much because it's like you care in such a grand way. It's amazing. I want to bring to you Carrie Bowles. We're so excited. Carrie and Abby Farrell, who's, who was not able to be here tonight, have both been invited to the Phil Mickelson Exxon Mobil Academy, Science and Math Academy. And that is a huge thing and I, I didn't really realize until I started researching. They had thirteen hundred applicants this year and only a hundred and thirty were chosen, five of those out of Arkansas and two of them out of Springdale Shaw Elementary. So we're, we're very excited about that. We've had, this makes our fifth teach, out of all the teachers, five of our teachers then will have gone to the academy, which is just phenomenal. I mean, the, what they've learned and brought back to us has been amazing. And I think it's really helped with our whole e-stem initiative. And I'm just so excited that Carrie's been chosen. So, do you want to say?
Oh, I'm just really excited to, we'll be going to Jersey City, which is just five minutes, you know, over the bridge to New York City, in, at the end of July. And I'm just really excited. You know, they, it's really with the STEM initiative, it's, this is in its eleventh year. And just, you know, learning those, you know, it's hands-on lessons for teachers to make science and math more engaging for students in grades, grades three through five. And I'm just, think it's a wonderful opportunity. And Phil Mickelson, they, you know, him and his wife, they partnered with Exxon Mobil and then National Science Teachers Association. And, you know, he comes and talks about, you know, golf and using that with the kids, which is great with our partnership with First T, about, you know, golf angles and force and mo- force and motion and distance. And it's all experiments and hands-on things and it's all expenses paid, the flight, hotel, meals, everything. So, and we're gonna stay for a few extra days, you know, and just kind of sightsee. And so we're just really excited to bring everything back and to learn as much as we can.
What's it like to get an email from Phil Mickelson?
Oh, so, well, it was my favorite offer. Yes, I know. It was so good. He sends a video and then they just make you feel so special. They call you and personally congratulate you. And, you know, it's just, you know, they just make, they do everything, you know, and it's just, you know, Phil Mickelson said that he wanted to make something where teachers were treated like the professionals that they are. And so it really is neat that they, you know, are just putting us up in this really nice place. And, you know, and it's just, it's just a really exciting opportunity. So.
Beautiful. That's great.
Well, that's good. So you said you've had, I'm sorry, you've had five teachers?
Five from Shaw, so far.
Well, I.
This is our seventh year.
I think that's tremendous.
It's such a testament to our district, well, what we're doing and.
I mean, that's, that's fantastic for your building to have that kind of influence. I mean, it just makes you better for our children. So that's wonderful.
Thank you, y'all.
Thanks.
Kamara, at our principal's meeting, you need to do a little in-service on how, how we get all these great teachers in front of them. That's super. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Greep, this Friday night, we have our A L E graduation. Will you talk with us about that?
So we're gonna have a grad- graduation again this year?
Yes. It's been a fast year and we're excited. Dr. Rollins, members of the board, we will be holding our graduation exercises this Friday at seven o'clock at the Springdale High School Performing Arts Center. And within our packet, I included the, the brief agenda for, for graduation. We're excited to have Mr. Tim Stevenson, who's the founder of the East Program. He will be our guest speaker. And we're anticipating graduating close to about a hundred and thirty kids. So that's significantly higher than what we had last year and we're excited. Within the packet, I've also included just an overview of the stage and where each member of the board will, will, will be. We encourage you to get there at about six fifteen to six thirty. And we'll have a reception room for you there. So, any questions?
Look forward to it. How many did you have last year?
We had a little over seventy.
We've got a hundred and thirty this year.
Close to a hundred and thirty.
Great job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Great job.
All right. Just in case you did bring your packets with you.
I guess they gave us some here. Care of those. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Springdale High School will have its hundred second commencement at one o'clock at Bud Walton Arena. If you remember correctly, it's lot sixty-two is where the parking is at. We'll be right after Bentonville. I would suggest if you could be there sometime around twelve fifteen or so, that would be tremendous. We'll have a parking attendant out there to let you into that parking lot. And for those of you that are veterans in this, you know, we just need you in the back of that room. Ms. Cook, it's the media room back there. And we'll have snacks back there, some hors d'oeuvres and stuff for you guys to munch on from our culinary arts program. To kind of tide you over until Harber's. I think we gain weight whenever we have graduation because we've got some good food there. But the handout I gave you shows you the, the order that we'll walk out and then what your seating arrangement will be as well when you're on stage. In your packet, you'll have the list of the graduates. Right now, as of right now, we got five hundred and seventy-five. We're hopefully to get that a little bit larger when we get closer. Some of them are kicking and screaming to get across the finish line, but we're pulling. And we'll have a, on this handout, I also have where you'll be standing and in your packet, we've written the names so you can kind of see where you want to rotate at. Obviously, if you know one of the graduates, you're more than welcome to step in and ask to hand that diploma to that particular graduate if you know their family or something. Zach Penalto will be our guest speaker. And he's told me he's gonna be writing about perseverance and having, how, how having a great mental attitude can propel you to life forward after setbacks. Attitude is not a gene, it's a muscle. You actively work. Time is your wealth. Live a life of service, how a life of servants, service can enrich your life more than money. And that's gonna be the main themes of his speech. And we're looking forward to a great morning or afternoon. Any questions?
Pete, you mentioned the parking pass. Let's talk about the floor pass.
Yes, sir. In your package, you will have a sticker that allow the U of A P D and U of A security to be able to let you onto the floor. You can come in through the side door where our graduates come in or down the elevator. If you come up, like the norm, when you go to Razorback Games, there's an elevator that goes down to the, the bottom floor down there. But if you are wearing that, you can have all access. And we'll have the University of Arkansas personnel that'll be ushers in the arena. We'll have U A P D as there as well to help out with crowd control. And we'll also have roughly about thirty-five to forty of our teachers there to help out with the arrangements as well. Immediately following, you'll, I think, move over to another room, which will have goodies there as well to prepare for the four P M Harbor High School ninth commencement exercises. And you should have received a packet which has all the information in it that I think that you need. You will already be parked, so I don't know that we're sending you another parking pass, but we may. If we do, please don't hand that to someone else because there's not that many parking spots in there. Just let them ride with you or, we, we're encouraging our people to carpool. Obviously, that may not be convenient for you. I would also like to announce that both of the Saturday commencement exercises will be live, streamed live on the Springdale School District YouTube channel. And so y'all might want to pass that along as well. You have in your packet the information I think that will, you will find. It is as up to date as it possibly could be today. Currently have five hundred and twelve graduates, which will be the last of about thirteen hundred graduates in this district, which will be another record as well. In the packet, you will also find your marching, your seating order, as well as your marching in order. And then Ms. Anderson is always very gracious to be there to make sure we all get in line in the right place. And the agenda is also, should be in there as well. And our goal as always is ninety minutes. Anything over that's a hostage situation. So that's the way we look at it. Except, except for board meetings. They're special times. What an honor.
Nice recovery.
What a good recovery. What an honor that we've experienced tonight. What an honor to see the students of the Springdale Schools. It was moving oftentimes to see the teacher work and students work. What a privilege it is to work alongside these great professionals. And I would entertain any questions you may have.
Speaker?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Dr. Dan Fariter will be our speaker. He has also spoken in the past at Springdale High School's commencement. And then I found out the other day in conversation with him that he spoke at our, the father of our senior class council president's graduation at Fayetteville High. And I didn't ask how many years ago. But a neat, neat tie to our district that he has. And his daughter teaches French at Harbor High School and is also taught at Springdale High School. Kristy King is Dr. Fariter's daughter. So he has contacted him and asked him if we can glean information from his speech. And he will be sending that to Doc. I told him that Dr. Rollins oftentimes likes to use quotes and things in his future work. And so he'll be sending that to you. He said he was still completing it, but he'll be sending that to you, hopefully in the next day or so. Good question. Thank you. Any others? We're looking forward to it. Thank you very much. About five thirty, we'll have a big party.
Mr. President, let me ask you to turn to page forty-nine in your agenda, I believe. One of the most special events that I recall took place in the auditorium at Harbor High School just a few days ago. And we were able to honor, this board was able to honor Dr. Marsha Jones for her service to the district. On page forty-nine, you see a resolution commemorating that activity, that event. And I would respectfully ask the board to pass the resolution on page forty-nine officially dedicating the Performing Arts Center at Harbor High School in her honor.
Would you mind, you want to read that resolution for us?
I'd be happy to.
Great.
Whereas Dr. Marsha Jones has provided outstanding leadership of curriculum and instruction for the students of the Springdale School District. And whereas Dr. Jones has been a strong advocate for the arts and has provided significant support for arts programs that have enriched and enhanced the lives of Springdale students and the Springdale community. And whereas, we wish to extend to Dr. Jones upon her retirement the deep appreciation of the school board, students, parents, staff, and patrons of the Springdale School District. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Performing Arts Center at Harbor High School will now and hereafter be officially known as the Dr. Marsha Jones Performing Arts Center in recognition of her distinguished and exemplary service.
Thank you.
I'd like to look that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
We have a motion by Ms. McVetridge and a second by Mr. Dotson. If there's no other discussion, we'll take a vote on the motion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. So it is now known as the Dr. Marsha Jones Performing Arts Center. Well, I know that she's busy this evening working hard in Little Rock, as I understand, to represent the school district, right?
As y'all may recall, at this time of the year, there's a joint meeting sponsored by the Arkansas School Board Association and the State Administrators Organization. And Dr. Jones and Joe Rollins are there today to talk about the high school and the Race to the Top Grant and our commitment to spawn innovation in the district. So they were keynoting that program today. So really a neat thing. I won't go on at length, but I would tell you that we did surprise her. And I don't think I've ever seen her happier than to be acknowledged this way by this school board. So, thank you all.
Dr. Rollins, I know that a couple of questions that I've gotten is where will her name be? Will it be outside? Or have you had a chance to think about that?
I've thought about it some, but I believe I'll take my good friend Jack C. And we'll go find just the right spot.
So you can let us know.
But, you know, we've got a great example to at least begin our considerations. The Pat Walker Theater at Springdale High School, as that, those decisions were made years ago. And I think that was exactly right for that facility. But we'll go look and I want Mr. C. to touch that process. Okay. Other questions? Did, did you have more than one?
No.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay. Board, there's one item remaining. That's item H on your agenda. And there, there should be information in front of you specific to a recommendation I want to make regarding completing the facility at Harbor High School. And I believe I have a drawing here. This has been a, it's been a fascinating project. This is a facility that is genuinely needed to complete the Harbor High School campus. I've been in communication with the board now for some time regarding this last phase of the work. When we went through the design and bid process, we were working off a budget that we thought, based on earlier information, would meet the market conditions of, at that time. By the time the bid actually took place, we, and we studied it and evaluated the original bid, we knew we could, had enough money in the budget that the board had approved to build the stadium. We could play the games. We needed to get started in order to have any chance to meet the timelines, et cetera. But there was a glowing overage. So I simply made the decision at the time to, to remove what I'm calling the general purpose dressing area from the budget. I knew that we had to study it more. Perhaps we had to value engineer it to get it within our budget, et cetera. And I've been working with Dr. Compton and staff, certainly Mr. C. and his team, and the Baldwin and Shell Construction Management Group. And you should have a letter in front of you that, that specifically addresses a recommendation that I want to make this evening to complete that project. We have taken in excess of three hundred thousand dollars out of the cost of the building. So I think our time was well spent. We still have a very functional building, one that will match and fit in beautifully with the design of the stadium and the other existing facilities there. But we need this general purpose dressing area for a variety of reasons. I would start first and foremost as this is a large complex with many extracurricular activities being served. And when it's completed, we'll have girls softball and tennis and track and soccer and the list goes on. We need a dressing facility for our girls, for our female athletes during the course of the school year, during the course of the school day, as those various groups compete. And this, the facility that you have in front of you, you see two coaches' offices, you see a large dressing area with well over two hundred plus lockers in that dressing area. And so you need to think of it, and certainly I think of it as a general facilities area that will serve multiple, multiple needs and regarding the sports events that will go on in the stadium and really beyond. stadium and really beyond the stadium. And then we need a place for visiting teams to dress. I thought for a long time that maybe we could use the Hellstrom Middle School as a dressing area. But the more you look at that, and the more you think about the number of players on large teams, and you realize the opportunity for damage to existing facilities, that's marginal, that's problematic. I would, I believe, and I recommend to you, that we increase our budget by the four eighty-one, two fifty that I'm recommending. And again, that's based on the work of Mr. C. and his team and the Baldwin and Shell Construction Management Group. They assure me that we can build the building for that amount of money. And Mr. Luttrell, I would appreciate the board's consideration of approving this additional expense.
Okay, all right. Questions for Dr. Rollins or folks that are here to help him?
I would just say, as usual, you've given us plenty of detail and plenty of time, and you've kept us in the loop the whole way with your thought process. And I'm convinced that you've looked at every way to do this, and I would fully support your recommendation.
Thank you, Joe.
It does appear that everybody together has developed a facility that can be used for a number of different things, so you've been able to kill several birds with one stone, which is certainly helpful. And as much as we can make those facilities useful, we appreciate it, all the work you guys have done on that. Okay, we do need to take formal action on this board, so I will accept a motion based on Dr. Rollins' recommendation.
I'll make a motion, it's approved, revised.
Okay, all right. We have a motion.
North, north building.
Okay, all right, we have a motion from Mr. Owenby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? There is none, okay.
Thank you, board.
Thanks again.
We will go to work immediately. We all understand that the calendar has been an issue for some time, but I'm very hopeful that this facility, along with the rest of the project, can be completed on time. I think there's some question about that, but as I said to Baldwin and Shell today, I believe a good construction management team can get that done, so.
So everything, what, everything should be ready?
No pressure, guys, no pressure.
Everything should be ready into June?
Into June? I love that. He's my coach. Thank you, board.
Well, good. I know it's, you know, you have worked a long time, and, you know, I think Dr. Brackett said earlier, this is the ninth graduating class. Is that what you said, Dr. Brackett? Okay. So, I mean, you know, in terms of completing that project, in terms of the economic development aspects of a community that is trying to build the entire community, whether it be at Springdale High School or Harbor High School, I appreciate you staying the course. And I know it's been hard, and some folks have had to be patient, Coach Stellic, but we appreciate it. I think we've got a good plan, and now we just go get it done. So, thank you.
And I'll just close this way, and y'all know this very well. We wanted to complete the Harbor project so we'd have a place to play while we were working on Springdale. Springdale will cover us the first year, then if we need to be covered while we're working on Springdale, something should happen, that'll work. My point simply is, we are beginning work in earnest now in terms of the design of the improvements at Springdale Bulldog Stadium as well. So as always, I'll hand this off to Mr. C. and to the Baldwin and Shell group, and then we'll turn our efforts to trying to be partners in planning the Springdale High project. So, thank y'all very, very much. Would you like to stretch a little bit?
Give us about a ten-minute break, I think, so we can get Clay to... Hang on just a minute. All right, thank you. We'll take about ten minutes, board, and then...
To bring to you tonight, we'll begin with the Race to the Top update. I'm doing that for Dr. Jones, who's in Little Rock, actually presenting about Race to the Top with Joe Rollins, who's presenting about I-School. So I'm happy to do that for her tonight. Just a few highlights, I'm not going to read this to you, I know it was in the packet. If you have any questions, I could answer those. The original five thousand Chromebooks have been ordered. Our network infrastructure hardware is in. The installation of that has begun. I believe eleven of the twelve TOSA positions have been, have had recommendations submitted to Dr. Cleveland's office. And then you'll see toward the end, we've made a number of presentations, the regional and state level, about this grant and the important work that we're doing with this grant. And then the third page of the Race to the Top update, well, I believe it's page sixty-two in the PDF, is a financial report as of the last day of April, so. Yes, sir?
Can you remind us, the total Chromebook count will be at the end of the...
Around eighteen thousand. Around eighteen thousand.
So we're just giving you five thousand out of eighteen thousand?
That's right. If the, that was the initial. We're rolling those out in phases over the first three years. Yes, sir?
So are our kids are able to take those home?
Not at this time. We want them to be able to, and Dr. Rollins continues to remind me of that, that we have a few board policies that we need...
That's one.
A number of schools do it. It's certainly, certainly, you know...
How much are they?
Some schools in Arkansas do it at K-12, some just do it for the older students. So it's just, you know, it's a matter of preference, kind of your tolerance for that, and as well as administrators for the things that might happen, you know, to them. You put them in a case, and that helps to make them, make them a little bit more, a little bit more rugged.
What about things that would happen with them? I mean, are there security where...
Yeah, you have...
Or a big brother couldn't get it and do something that maybe they shouldn't?
Right, so there's a, there's a filter that applies the same filter that students would have at school while they're at home with those, with those devices. And obviously, that's something that we need to have in place before they go home, as well as we have some policies to change. Specifically, right now, students are not allowed to take computers home. That policy was written a number of years ago, when it seemed probably like a really bad idea for a student to carry a computer out of a school building. We need to, we need to change that, and we'll be bringing that to you so we can get that in place.
But part of, sorry, no, you go ahead, sorry. It's part of the beauty in this is a kid has access after hours, weekends, can work from wherever on this Chromebook. So we're going to have to figure that piece of it out.
Absolutely, and...
But there's got to be some strict accountability. I mean, they have trouble keeping up the library books.
Absolutely. Without question, they do.
Maybe there's a GPS chip, or there's something, there's some technology we could use to...
There's a, there are a variety of different things, including, you know, should the device be reported stolen, that it can be, you know, inactivated the next time it's on the, on the network. There are a variety of things that, you know, really reduce the exposure of the school district. Interestingly enough, I would point out, these devices cost less than seven textbooks that we would purchase for kids.
At how many?
Seven. Like if you were to purchase seven textbooks for a secondary student, that would cost more, two or three times as much as one of these devices. So, you know, they are assets of the school district, we need to take care of them, but technology is so much less expensive than it used to be. The exposures, the exposure is a lot less. Other questions about that?
Do you have to program all eighteen thousand of them?
Well, no, I mean, they almost, they almost don't have to do anything at all. Right, Eric. I don't, I don't have to do them, they just work now.
Let's ask Eric.
It is actually quite easy. And that's one of the reasons for selecting Chromebooks. They are easy, so, for that. Other questions?
Oh, they're magic anyway, so.
They are, they are kind of magic. It's a very exciting time. The devices are exciting to me to get those in and get those out in classrooms, as well the network infrastructure, that upgrade, as well as our upgrade in our internet bandwidth. Those are all, those are all big pieces. Those have to be in place for the devices to work, and we're all, we're all on time for those. So that's the Race to the Top update, unless you have any, any further questions?
I'm just curious too, if a child has one at home that would work into our system as well, how does that, how does that work? If they were to bring a Chromebook from home and use it?
Well, if they have internet at their own course, the way it works is they'll call back to us, automatically it's pre-programmed, they can't change it, and they'll get internet policy from us, and we'll all automatically get a filtered internet connection if they have internet at home.
She's talking, you're talking if the student brings his or her own device to school?
Right.
Yeah, she's talking about BYID, yeah, the other way.
We do have, we do have some policies, we do have some infrastructure in place for cases to bring their devices to school, but I think it's still a board policy regarding to that.
Right, okay. So we'd be looking at that as well?
We're trying, we're going to try to bring it to y'all at one time. You know, that's another thing about the technology becoming less expensive, is more and more students, you know, will want to bring their own device, and those parents will want to, will want to send them with their own device.
It may not have to be an app, or might not have to be Chrome.
That's right.
An app head.
That's, yeah, that's exactly right, so. Working on those. Exciting, big changes. You know, really, three years ago, neither of these things, you know, were conceivable, a computer for every child, or that some, that many kids would want to bring their own device, or have the resources to do so. So, as you know, technology changes really quickly, it's really exciting. Now I'd like to move to an update on the I-School. Update a few points to that. We have, right now, or as of yesterday, I didn't look today, and I apologize, but as of yesterday, we had one hundred and eighty-five student applications. As you remember, that opened April the fifteenth, so between April the fifteenth and yesterday, one hundred and eighty-five students apply. That will be open, the application window is open at least until May the fifteenth, and it may be open after that, certainly, certainly want to give everyone an opportunity if it wants to come. The potential staff members, we went through and selected some staff members and interviewed those people, and we were not ready to make the final decisions about who would teach on the I-School. One reason is we don't know how many students we'll have. But the other reason, it wasn't quite time for that, but we had some training. A lady named Rose Colby that came from New Hampshire, that we met when we were in New Hampshire, she came and did some training a couple of weeks ago with the teachers. There is training going on right now, and then there's more training the first week in June or the last week in May. The point is, we have, our teachers for the I-School are in some ongoing training for curriculum and instruction for that unique way, the competency-based and self-paced piece. We're planning two summertime events for families of those students. One is a pretty fun event, another one is getting to know more about the school, meeting some of the folks from Nwac. We've done quite a bit of work with Nwac since I was with you last. Nwac brought to us six associate degrees that they recommend be available to students. They're all STEM-based. Some of them are Associate of Applied Science, some are Associate of Science, and some are Associate of Arts. We're continuing to work through that, as well as really developing the relationship between the school staff and Nwac as far as Nwac's role in advising our kids about college, you know, from, from the very early, really from the eighth grade year, as well as our own advising for those students. Nwac has said they want to be a part of our summer events and the first couple of weeks of school to really, really get to know the kids, and so the kids can get to know those We're working right now through facility, things we need to do to the facility, and I'm talking about technology and things like that. Furniture, personnel, and then the curriculum instruction piece continues to go on. So almost every aspect of the school is coming forward at the same time right now. And a lot going on every day with, with our school.
On the cost side, the Nwac costs side, is it still generally where discussions are located?
It is, it is still generally, still generally where the discussion is, and we can, Dr. Rollins continues to, to work on that, and...
The current position has been reformed.
Yeah.
We have to say, there is a benefit, a benefit concern for the 39th ward.
It is, you're correct. It is hard to deny that it is a bargain. I also would have to admit that it could be a barrier for some of our families, and we certainly don't want that. We have...
Is it similar to the concurrent cost that we, in the district right now?
Yes. They lowered their concurrent cost for effective next year, and that's the cost. It is, it is, it's forty-nine dollars per credit hour. So it's, it's real, it's a bargain. Still might present some type of a challenge to work. We have two years, which seems like a lot of time, although it's going to go really quickly. We've got some time to continue to work on that before those students earn those classes, but it's a big priority for us. It's a big priority for us. Thank you for...
And is that part of the conversation that you're having with parents as you go along?
We have. At all the parent meetings, you know, it always comes up, and we talk about it, and we say to them exactly what we, what we say to you. Right, and some of them, you know, a lot, I say a lot, some parents after the meeting, you know, come up and said, that's, that's a big bargain. We'd be, we'd be delighted to pay that for the first two years of college for, for our child, and we, we know that that's true. Finally, I have, you've got this packet that I put at your, at your station, and this was not in your, it's not in your board packet, this is brand new. And it's, it's pretty exciting. We have some results here. These are preliminary results, and I shared this with Aaron, but also shared with the fact that it's preliminary, it's not something that we need to be public about, but certainly we can talk to you about some incredible growth on this top, this cream-colored sheet. If you look in that first set of bars above the word combined, that's the, that's the average of all students in the district on the eleventh grade literacy exam from two thousand and ten all the way through two thousand and fourteen. Each color is a different year. And what you can see is, from last year to this year, that eleven, really it's twelve percent increase in proficient and advanced. That is, that is very, that is a very big increase, especially when you start out near seventy percent to go up another twelve percent in a school year. That is really big. If you go to the next column, you see there the Hispanic column and the tremendous growth there. You'll see that growth again in the LEP column, and finally in the free and reduced column. Several children are included in all of those columns. What we can, what we know by looking at this is, we did a very good job increasing the performance of our limited English proficient students. And then that, you know, that impacted the other columns, including combined. We have a lot of things to be proud of. One of the things Ms. Garrett and I are working on right now is to make sure we have a good understanding of what we did, what was different this year. Now this, we've just had this for a couple of days. I don't have answers for you about that. We're trying to let the high school principals go through graduation, which they consider to be a pretty big deal. And then we'll get back on this. If you turn to the next sheet, the blue sheet...
Give them something to do on Sunday.
Right, yeah, for sure. We'll have, we'll have that assignment out to them Sunday afternoon. The blue sheet here, this is a comparison, this is just this year, this two thousand and fourteen preliminary data. The columns, the blue column is the state average, the red column is the regional average, and the green column is the Springdale average. You can see that we outperformed the state in the region all the way over, except for SES where we met the region and outperformed the state. So you can see we are doing, you know, above, above average there. That's good to see. You'll see some of those same, some of the, some of the same patterns. This yellow sheet, there's been a lot of talk in the, in the news lately about the achievement gap. And so in Springdale, our two largest populations are Caucasian students and Hispanic students. And you can look here, this is a, this starts at two thousand and ten and goes all the way over to our preliminary data there in two thousand and fourteen. And this is just another way to look at what you see as those two lines get closer. That is called closing the achievement gap. And we, we have made a significant step in that direction just in this one school year. Cut it in half. Oh, we, yes, sir, we cut it in half. And again, again, it is, it's really big.
Dr. Rollins, help me remember the people that came in and evaluated all of the school district, and, and we got some special certification. Help me remember what that's, about four or five years ago. Because nobody here, how about you, Pete? Do you remember?
The man's in.
Yeah. And they gave us glowing remarks in everything. Their only challenge is when we left, when they left, is close that gap and see a more diverse faculty. They understood that the faculty issue was something that, you know, you can't just create, create that. But this is amazing. This is truly, truly amazing for everybody involved.
Well, the gap's closing, they're both going up.
Yes.
It's not closing because one of them's flat.
Right.
The top one's flat.
That's exactly right. And that's, that's exactly what ESEA and our current ESEA flexibility require. All students go up and the, and the gap closes. That's, it's a challenge. This is why it's so important to find out what was different this year. Why do these, why are these scores like this? We need to know what we did to make this, to make this change. This is, this is, it's amazing. And I have been in conversation with, with a lot of different people to make sure that I, that I understand and could stand here in front of you and, and be as clear about this as I am. to make sure that I, that I understand and could stand here in front of you and, and be as clear about this as I am. Thankfully, well, not thankfully, Mr. Dodson, but it's interesting you brought up, Advanced Ed is coming back this fall. And so we'll have some good achievement updated to, to share with them. This is just grade eleven literacy. It's not into the other grades. We certainly hope that, that all of our, all of our data will come in like this. There was concern about the weather. Didn't, the weather didn't seem to affect the seventeen-year-old juniors that much. So hopefully it didn't affect the younger children.
So why didn't, could've selected, you know, eighth grade math to look at too?
This is the only data we have back. This grade eleven literacy is the first exam they take. They took this in March. Benchmark just finished up, and this just, we just got this last week late.
This is the only one you could get?
Oh, yeah, it's the only thing that's available. They're not even, like, and of course, algebra and biology, I mean, those tests are going on right now. I mean, they're not even all done. Yeah, they're just finished. Yeah, algebra's today and tomorrow. And so the green sheet, the final piece here, currently we have heard, recently we've heard a lot about the all-students group and the tag group. Remember the targeted achievement gap group? That's what tag stands for. That group is made up of students that, that are socio-economically disadvantaged ESL students and special education students. And so on the, on the yellow sheet, I showed a, a closing achievement gap between Caucasian and Hispanic students. But I also wanted to demonstrate to you, in our current federal accountability model, or our state and federal accountability model, we are also closing the achievement gap here as well. You can see that two thousand, this has just got the two years on it, and I apologize about that. From two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, the all-students increased and the gap closed. Basically, almost got cut in half as well. So from several different ways of looking at this data, it is really good. It is strong, it is strong data. And so I just couldn't pass up the opportunity to bring it to you tonight. As the season progresses and we get more data, I'll continue to put together more comprehensive looks at our student achievement data.
So what do you have to wait on before this is information that we will see that is more in a public fashion?
It won't be fully public until October or so. I mean, I know, I know, right? But the, the, you have to go through the corrections process and, and all of that, and certification, and all those things. It takes a long, long time. And this is, we, we have traditionally held off on really bringing any of it to you until then. But I, I did some research. This is, this is a perfectly acceptable thing to do. So I'm gonna try to do it more, more real-time and, as, as we go and, and share like this. And then some, hopefully, well, really, that's why the annual report to the public is so late, you know, in the year. That's why it's in the later part of the year, because you're supposed to share your data by then. And so that's, that's why that happens like that. Anyway, I'll be bringing it to you as I can. Yes, sir?
The graduation rates also...
Gradu, yeah. The graduation rates are good.
It has to be factoring in this.
Well, we think so. The graduation rate data that just came out was what we knew about last fall. And now they've done those, they've done all of those studies on those things, and they're making that really public. And our graduation rates look really good as well.
That has, that they, they work together.
They, we...
For the third literacy.
Yeah, we think they all work together. You know, it's, students that drop out of school traditionally, or statistically, don't read very well. They, they, you know, that's one of the reasons they don't do very well in school, and they're prone to drop out, so, anyway. Other questions or anything? All right.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations to everyone.
Thanks for here.
Encouraging.
And I, I want to acknowledge, and I know you do as well, this is the first book. This is phenomenal. Yes, Kim, I want to thank you for the work that you've done in these secondary schools. Yeah, the work that y'all have done, both foundations, move this thing forward. There is a passionate commitment here among our teachers and our professors, and the leadership team. To accelerate student achievement in a dramatic way, and our leaders are helping to help that as well.
It's just amazing. We're doing this without, without a race to the top.
It's a whirlwind.
This, this is gonna get crazy.
Thank you all. Very good for the class. Okay. Go.
Really amazed, Kelly.
Board, I have three items for you this evening. The first one is the monthly building project update. You have the two projects in front of you. Harbor indoor facility slash tennis, still are finalizing that project, have not made the final payout on that. And then the Harbor Stadium, we are starting to do monthly draws on that as Baldwin and Shell is working on that project.
This is...
So, any questions on that for me?
Will you clarify, just so we're all on the same page? We've talked tonight about the running of the bid, but the board needs to understand your numbers here.
Okay.
There's a, what I've talked about all along is construction costs, remember that tonight? Construction costs that the architectural fees are being included here, and that's why you're seeing that number. Right, I love the construction number.
That's exactly right. Dr. Rollins, if you, if you look at my report, the maximum guaranteed cost of four point three million, and then the amount listed as other of one point one million is the part of the project that we're going to handle internally, rather than Baldwin and Shell. When you add those two numbers together, it comes right at the five point five number, a little under.
And so the other numbers that we're explaining, and you have listed, is architectural fees, I want my chair aboard. First President, is you okay with that?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that information, yeah.
Board, the next item that I have for you does require board action. As you will recall, in two thousand and eleven, voters approved for us, for the district to issue up to a hundred and seventy-eight million eight hundred thousand in bonds. The vast majority of that would be refunding existing bond issues. But the money that was generated from that would go to build a middle school and a junior high, which we have done. Because of Dr. Rollins' leadership and your leadership, we have not had to issue all of those bonds, but we have completed both of those projects. So today, there is a remaining amount of a little over six million dollars that can be issued under this approval from the voters, if the district chooses to do so, to be used for other projects. And so what we would like to do tonight is ask the board to approve this updated application to present to the State Board of Education, or State Department of Education, excuse me, just so that we have the latitude for future projects to issue this indebtedness if we choose to do so. Specifically, the projects that we have in mind are the two media centers that I believe you're all familiar with, the one at Smith and the one at Elmdale. So the Beardsleys are here, Buster Beardsley and Scott Beardsley, there they are. They're here and be happy to, to answer any questions. As you know, we have done two bond issues thus far. This would be the third one under this authorization. Anything I missed, guys?
Buster's just putting in this time period, into the designated time period that we...
It, it's just updating the application for the state board so that they know where we stand today.
And we've already updated it twice already.
That's correct.
This is just another update.
That's correct.
The state board put into policy two years ago that every application approved has one year. And after that one year, you have to renew it to keep it active. In this case, it's been renewed as each year, but now you're at the final stage. And when you ask for renewal of the six million, does not mean you have to spend the six million. You can spend three million of it, four million of it, whatever matches the projects. So if you want to keep active with this, this is the easiest way to do bond money at this point. If we do anything else, it's gonna be a lot more required paperwork, all kinds of things. So I just kinda wanted you to know, even though you are asking for the six point one two million, that does not mean you're gonna spend that much. You're just going to keep that much of the project funds available to the district.
And if I'm understanding correctly, on page sixty-six of our agenda, where it talks about the updated application for a permit to issue bonds, it appears to be very specific, so that we're living within the spirit of, of what we talked to the voters about. Any remaining funds will be used for constructing, refurbishing, remodeling, and equipping school facilities. So it's gonna go to school facilities as well. If we choose to use this money, it will go for those types of projects that are facilities-type projects, all right? I just want that to be clear for all of us, and certainly for the public to know that that's the way those funds will be invested. Other questions?
Just like, have some funds, if you need them.
Right, one to build baseball.
Whatever. We are on go with our media center conditions, and partnership funding has been approved for those projects. So we need our portion of the money in order to make those work. And so that is, that is the reason we're here today, doing this at this point. My hope is that we'll, we'll get that in a hurry.
So what board action do you need?
Well, if you look at page sixty-five, there is actually a formal motion in our board packet. So if I could, if there aren't any other questions or discussion items, if I could have a board member recite that motion for me, that would be terrific.
I do one more question. So the interest rate calculator here, that, is that gonna still be accurate? Four point four six percent, and then there's a big drop?
Well, I, I think that the, now, of course, they're gonna be much better able to answer this than I. The four point four six was on a huge issue, and then the three whatever.
One hundred twenty-five.
Right. This would be a really small issue. I'm gonna guess what, three seventy-five to four?
I'd love for it to be under four. That's just a requirement for the department to match up with the original application, but it, it's not a limit. It's not a range. It's just a blank on the form that's required.
Kinda sorta, what it should be.
It, it should be very actual.
Kinda sorta. And at what point would we approve it, the state board approves it, what point do, are the bonds sold? Is that...
When the administration calls and says...
It's time.
We need a draw.
We need to read the...
Yeah.
And we have to advertise in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks, giving them public notice. You're required to take the competitive bid, and then it takes four weeks after that, and then come back to the board with closing documents. All those things you have to sign.
Yes.
And so from the time Dr. Rollins or Kelly says we're ready, it's probably five to eight weeks before you have that.
That's true. Okay. Other questions? Well, if not, I will accept a, a motion if somebody would take that on.
Nobody wants to...
I make a motion to update the application for a permit to issue bonds with related documents originally approved by the State Department of Education on June thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, and to re-employ First Security Beardsley Public Finance as fiscal agent.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Cook, and was that a second from you, Mr. Hutchinson?
Ms. Melford.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Jeff, second best.
There is none, so the motion does carry. So, thank you, Kelly, Scott, Buster, we appreciate all your help on that, so...
Board, the final item that I have for you this evening is the monthly financial reports. These are for the month of April. As we have discussed all year, I have been concerned about the revenue situation for local taxes. And this is the widest gap I've had yet on my monthly reports that you're seeing in April. As you'll recall, last month, I talked to you about the fact that the property tax statements went out later than they had in the past, and that I was hoping that collections would come in heavier in the month of May. And, I mean, I'm sorry, come in heavier in the month of April, which we received in the month of May, and that did happen. I'm happy to report, our collections for this month were three million more than they were this month last year. So we're headed back in the right direction. I'm hopefully optimistic, I think it's, yeah, it's what I've told Dr. Rollins in a memo I put to him. I'm hopefully optimistic that I am gonna hit our budget after all. If we have a, a month in June like we did last year in June, then we're gonna be, we're gonna be on budget, so. Y'all were worried for nothing, see? I tried to tell you every month. No, I'm sorry.
That's what we get to do.
Yeah, I was very relieved. That's an understatement, so we're back on track. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jill, there's nothing in June that's glaring that...
Well, of course, when I, well, of course, when I called and talked to them and I said, so what do you think in June, you know? And they're saying, well, now, it may be lower because May was so heavy. So, you know, it's, who knows? I, I'm thinking positively. We're gonna be good.
Cautiously optimistic.
That's right.
But it comes in the first week of each month, the first...
What it, what they do is, they collect all month long, and then they send us the payment within the first couple of weeks of the following month. And so...
Hold on by the board meeting next month.
Yes, you will. Yes, you will.
Close we are.
Yep.
Certainly encouraging. It seems like there's some positive things going on out there, so we'll encourage all the economic development we can in Springdale. And I guess on the, as far as the expense side goes, Kelly, and any...
No, we're pretty, we're pretty much on par with last year, so I feel really good about it.
Okay.
Make sure to move, prove the ethical financials.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the financials. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McFetridge, and that motion was made by Mr. Owen Bessentia, sorry about that. Okay, so all in favor of accepting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is none, so the motion carries, all right. And I don't see our SEA rep here tonight, so I guess we are adjourned.
Would the director, she won't turn around either. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I always had to, somebody benefits right there, our Arkansas Feature Association. But no, I, I didn't say that at the time.
Okay. Okay. I think we're excused. Thank you, everybody, for staying.